All right, great. Time is 6:32. Welcome to this evening's Board of Selectmen meeting in Groveland, Massachusetts. Date is April 1st, 2019. If you'll all rise and join me with the pleasure of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Awesome, so it is. No one have a public comment, so we'll jump right into the warrant approval. Approval to pay payroll warrant 19-39, the amount of $146,251.04.
Seconded.
Motion is second. Any for a discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor?
Yep.
Motion to approve bill warrant 19-39 in the amount of $335,045.59, which breaks down as follows. Town $123,284.83, water sewer $5,232.07, light bill $181,140.38, and grants revolving $25,388.31.
Seconded.
We have a motion to second any for a discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor?
Yep.
Terrific. We're a little early for the public hearing, so if we can jump right into discussion on the cable contract update by the Cable TV Advisory Board.
Tracy's running a little late tonight.
Okay. Let's see if we can move on and kill another, kill something else there. We have the 11 Groveland Commons way, right of first refusal. I don't know if you gentlemen have had a chance to read that over. I know it took me by surprise last Friday, Thursday. My understanding is the 40B unit that's being sold and the town has the right of first refusal on the property. Is that correct, Denise? Have I got that all right?
I think that's right.
Yes, I believe so.
And, I'm not sure, but it may be a Mr. Cox in the audience speaks on behalf of the client on this property.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board of Selectmen. My name is Bill Cox, and I'm here tonight representing Monica Barberi, who is the current owner of 11 Groveland Commons. She purchased the unit back in 2003. It's an affordable unit, as you indicated before, and she decided to sell the unit in the early fall of last year. And so she worked through an organization, CHAPA, Citizens Housing and Planning Association, which generally handles these and finds qualified buyers in order to purchase the units. Let me just tell you a little bit about her. Monica Barberi has lived in Groveland most of her life. She continues to live in Groveland here with her husband and two children. She was fortunate enough to be chosen for this unit, as I indicated, back in 2003. The town has the right of first refusal. There's a deed rider that's recorded along with the deed that enforces all of the provisions of the affordability clauses. The CHAPA sent a letter to the town back in September of last year, and the terms of the deed rider, as well as those contained in the letter, were that the town has 30 days to respond to the letter and give notice that they intend to move forward with their right of first refusal. Not hearing from anybody, the parties move forward, because that has been the case. That's what I've been told by CHAPA, is that that's been the way this has generally proceeded in prior terms, although I don't think a unit's been sold for quite some time. In any case, we got to the point where we were getting ready to close on the sale on March 22nd, and the closing attorney required a written waiver from the town. CHAPA indicated they had never had anybody ask for this before, because again, in that deed rider, it indicates that if the right of first refusal isn't exercised in 30 days, that it's waived. So, that's why we're here before you tonight, because in order for her to close, we had to extend the closing date from March 22nd. It's now this Wednesday, April 3rd, and we were, are asking the Board to go ahead and approve the waiver of the right of refusal under the deed rider that's recorded for this particular unit.
Any questions?
No, I had spoken with Attorney Cox, and I had looked into the information from the town, and as long as it, the rider was on the new deed and the sale price was in the, within the tolerances, and it was, and I think Attorney Cox, you have a copy of the purchase and sales agreement with you indicating the price on it, which is within, within the normal range.
She, I can tell you that she purchased the unit in 2003 for $112,000, and the unit is now selling some nine years later at $122,500. So, it's a difference of a bit over $10,000 between those nine years, so, and it falls within the range that's required under the terms.
No, I'm good with it, as long as it falls within the range. I know those units were supposed to be sold for X amount of dollars when they ultimately got sold, so, I don't have a problem with it.
And I can also tell the Board that the, this is the deed rider that's been forwarded by CHAPA to the closing attorney that will be recorded with the deed on this transfer as well, so continuing the affordability provisions on that unit.
So, the closing is the only thing that can move forward? The right of refusal doesn't apply anymore? Is that what you're saying?
The terms of the rider are, the town has 30 days, 30 days to exercise that.
Right.
The letter was sent by CHAPA last September, so those 30 days would have passed.
Right, so that time's passed, then. So, the only thing that's different now is that you need a letter to close, and the closing date has just been pushed back so you can get that letter?
Correct.
Okay.
Now, if the letter was never sent or received, how does that 30 days work?
Well, the notice has to be provided. Generally, the law is that when a party mails a letter, unless it's returned, there's a presumption that it was delivered. So, in this case, I know I've spoken to CHAPA, and they've indicated that they did mail the letter out. Also, I know they sent a copy of that to Ms. Barberi, and she received a copy in the mail shortly after the date of the letter.
We don't, I imagine the town rezident won't purchase this, is that what I gather?
I would say at this point, we don't have a viable affordable housing committee, so they would really be the entity that would oversee things like this.
And they're not required to send it, you know, certified mail?
No, the terms of the rider don't require it to be certified.
So, I guess it's just a simple vote? Someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the, or exercise our, or not exercise our right of first refusal.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to second. Any for a discussion on the matter? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor?
Yes.
Thank you very much. If I could indulge your Mr. Chairman, I just happened to have a copy of the waiver with me. Would it be possible to get a signature on that this evening?
I suppose. There you go.
Thank you.
Good luck. The budget discussion's going to take quite a while.
You do have some departments here. If you wanted to start that, you certainly could, or you could hold off.
Could you go to the votes of the Board?
We can go to the votes of the Board. Sure, we can skip around. So, we have the resignation of Matthew Lehman from the Police Department effective March 11th, 2019.
I'll make a motion to approve the resignation of Matthew Lehman from the Police Department effective of March 11th, 2019.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to second. Any for a discussion on the matter? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor? We have the fire chief's job description. We didn't add anything different than what we had kind of spoken about already, right?
Well, you wanted me to use Wenham as the...
Template.
Template, but they don't have a strong fire chief, so I did have to actually change quite a bit to comply with the requirements that we have here. And I did not know what you wanted to do for hours work. The Board kind of talked about that back and forth.
I think we're looking for just do the job and not set hours.
Yeah, no set hours.
Do the job, here's the pay, whatever the hours take. I think that's, I think that's what we're talking about.
Yeah. I mean, I wouldn't want to leave it open-ended to the point where you're paying someone to do a job and they're not showing up, but I mean, somehow if you said...
So, am I just going to leave it at full-time?
Huh?
Do you want me to just leave it at full-time?
Or 40-hour minimum?
Yeah, I just don't want this person to say that we're going to hire him, and there's not going to be any hours, and then they're going to come and go as they want, and the job's not going to get done, and they're going to come back before us, so I would definitely like to either not pin him to a hour hour, but I think we're going to have to say full-time or something like that. I don't think we should leave it open-ended.
What should we say? Full-time minimum 40 hours?
Sure.
No max? Minimum?
But I think you were looking at like 30 hours, and that's why you had a lower salary, is what the discussion was at the last meeting, or two meetings ago.
And we're, and what we were discussing before was to, was to not put an hourly rate to it, but yet leave it to the point where you have a dollar amount, which is okay, but you also got to remember that you could open up a can of worms, and someone can come in and say, "Hey, you know, I'm not showing up Thursday and Friday because..."
I already put in my hours.
Right, I already put my hours in. Somehow you got to do something to pin it to some kind of an hourly. Can you just say full-time and leave the 40 hours out of it?
Yeah, I mean technically, a fire chief, like the police chief is a 24/7 position.
Right.
But I think for retirement purposes and for, you know, if you're looking for minimums, there should be a number of hours associated with it. I mean, we can try just full-time without a number of hours.
Can we go as vagrissian, can you go as vagrissian 20 to 40 hours? Or 30 to 40 hours? Full-time?
I think we're looking at 32.
We know it's going to be more than 20.
Right, but I'm trying to get to a number where we're not locking in, but we're also covering what we're covering.
Minimum of 32 hours?
What's that?
Minimum of 32 hours?
Sure, minimum of 32 hours. And leave it at that, full-time, call it?
As long as it's a minimum.
Don't even call it full-time, call it minimum of 32 hours. I mean, that will get you in the, in the range of where you want to be of having someone that's 30 hours for the dollar amount that Denise is talking about.
Right, but then you're going to get into that situation that if someone works 35 hours, they're going to want more money because there was a minimum of 32.
Right, but on the same token, if you set a minimum of 32 hours, they got to come here and work that minimum. We never said...
Right, and what if they work 35 hours?
Salary is not overtime.
But salary, but you're associating less than full-time. Salaryed position is normally 40 hours or the full equivalent of the week.
So, what you're saying is you don't want us to hold them to a certain amount of hours? You just want to say, "Full-time to the job."
Yeah, I mean, what's the assumption when someone says it's a full-time job? What are the assumptions in hours? Minimum 40, right? For most of us?
I'm salary, so I could work 100 and still get paid the same.
Yeah, I've been there before, I know, but typically, even still, on salary, the expectation is 40 hours somewhere, right?
In the commercial world, yes.
Your, my expectations might be 50. Some salary, yeah, that's the way it works, but I think if we, if we just left it at full-time, I think it almost is, you know, self-defining.
Yeah, because 40, here in the town, full-time is what, what's the hourly rate for full-time?
Well, it depends what department.
We're not looking for a rate. How many hours, you mean?
Hours.
Right, depends what department. Town hall is 37, police and fire, well, police is 40.
Fire?
Get a call. We don't have a number of full-time hours.
So, I mean, full-time, say full-time.
Full-time, that's what I...
Okay.
Anything else? Anything meet to what we wanted? Question now is, can we find someone for this?
Well, we did it with the highway guy. We're going to do it again. We're going to find out. Unless you want to pay $100,000 and guarantee you're going to bring someone in, you don't have the money to do that.
Right, so just keep in mind, though, with highway, we had the money in the budget to pay what you paid him. With this position, unless we change the budget going into it, so, we would either not hire somebody, or you'd have to make this work. With highway, we had the money in the existing budget, and then we budgeted 20.
Right, but you wouldn't be able to hire this person for another year, right? Because you have to wait for another whole fiscal year to put the money in.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So, if you can't find someone for the salary, then you either need to...
Right, so we're going to be, we're going to be pushing it out anyway, because it's going to be another whole year out.
Oh, we've got to rob some Peter somewhere to pay Paul.
You'd have to have a special town meeting to do that.
Well, every, every month that you, you go into the fiscal year, you gain, you gain some salary. I put it out, what we have listed here, and see what you get.
I mean, so too, at this point.
Yeah, because we can't go find money anyways, right? There's no, there's no money to be found, so...
That's it. Money tree is dug it up, it's gone now.
Any other changes on it?
Nothing I see. Anyone else see any? Anything else they'd like to change, alter, add, amend? I think it's pretty complete and... As is.
Yeah, it's like, it's worded 24/7 basis, 24 days per year, so if you read that, I mean, you kind of know what we're looking for.
I think most professionals in this field kind of know that going in.
Right.
Their first response is, it's a special kind of person to begin with. I, I don't think that if there's an emergency here at 3 o'clock on a Sunday morning that...
Right.
You can say, "Well, it's off-hours."
No, we have all the education experiments and the special requirements all listed, so I think we got it covered.
So, do we need to, we do? Somebody like to make a motion to post this job as-is?
I'll make a motion to hire a, or look, to vote, look for a fire chief, full-time position, based on 40 hours per week, at a salary range of $65,000 to $75,000 a year, based on the job description that we've laid out.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. Any for a discussion?
I thought we were talking about no hours.
Just full-time.
Yeah.
All right, so I'll amend it to just full-time, no 40 hours a week.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Yep.
All right, I think we can wipe out this one, too. Cedar Dale's 2019 licorations, amend as approved by A B C C. So, they had a change of management, is my understanding, over at Groveland, Cedar Dale, and they needed this, due to this change of management, Mr. Peter, Peter Lapata?
Lapata.
I thought his name was Justin.
Not according to what was submitted to the state.
I know Peter to be the son.
He was on the request from the state.
I thought I saw last meeting when this came up, Justin was on here.
It's Peter Justin Lapata.
It is Peter Justin.
His legal name is Peter.
Okay. I've always known him as Justin. I've known his son as Peter, so, I want to give a licorance to a 16-year-old kid. That's asking for trouble.
Yeah, the actual legal manager is just listed as Peter Lapata.
Okay.
I'll move for passage. Approve that. I'll second the license transfer.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any for a discussion on the matter? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor?
Yep.
Terrific. What else can we get through? Denise, there's seven minutes. Do you have, I think you can find this director's time in seven minutes?
I just have a few things. So, GYS has requested to use the fields behind the Bagnell School on Saturdays through spring and summer for their pre-K U4 soccer program. Since we've redone the fields, we've only allowed like day-to-day usage of the field, so before I gave them the go-ahead, I wanted to check with the Board and make sure there was no issues that you had.
All day, Saturday, Sunday, is that what it is?
Yeah, let me check his actual time that he was requesting. It was pretty much all day. Sorry, I haven't found the right email. 11:00 AM and 12:30 PM, they both run an hour, so 11 to 1:30 from April through June 15th.
No one else has put in a request for the...
Not as of yet, no.
Well, as you know, it's going to wear down what you've done, unless you move them around different locations there, so I think that needs to have a discussion, because you just got it all looking good and got everybody happy. Now, we're going to stop pounding it. I don't know. I mean, it's there for the town to use, but...
Soccer like football will tear it up.
Yeah, it's going to tear it up.
Now, it's going to be my question to Bill, is can it take that extra abuse with recess and then on Saturday?
No lawn can take that use every, every Saturday for that amount of time with that many people on it. It's going to wear down, no matter what you do to it. Unless you move them, say, one Saturday here and one Saturday over there, I mean, you've got sprinklers out there, and it's going to have to be fertilized and cared for, and I was down there a few weeks ago looking at it, and it's got a lot of leaves and needs to be cleaned up and what have you, but, I mean...
Yeah, I mean, I will say it is pre-K, so probably talking like four-year-olds, four- and five-year-olds. I don't know how much damage they'll do to the fields, but...
Maybe give them the go-ahead, and just ask if they can move, alternate, alternate areas. I mean, make, that way they gets moved around.
Yeah, because we don't want to see it get destroyed for the summer program either, because that's their, it's really their home out there.
When are you saying, when were you saying you're going to start it?
April 13th through June 15th.
Well, really, in April, the lawns haven't even started coming up yet, and you're still going to fertilize it, you're still going to clean it, and you've got to get them going before you start getting on there, because if you're on there before, they're, they're turning green. They're going to really...
Shanahan they're using for something else, I take it?
They're used for the rest of the soccer program.
I think what they do in that, that league is they just cone off an area. So, I'd be okay with doing that if they just keep moving it around every Saturday, because they don't use like a huge area, it's just a smaller area, and it's just coned off, I think.
They're small kids.
Yeah, but still, moving it around would help.
Yeah, before they get on there, we really should probably, probably try to get some fertilizer and, if we can, in that short timeframe, get the fertilizer down and get the sprinklers going. At least it's starting to make the lawn grow.
Should we ask them to delay a couple of weeks till the end of April, first of May?
It'd be nice if the lawns were turning green, but I mean, if the weather stays like that, they're going to start beating up pretty good anyway. But they definitely need to be cleaned up, because I was down there last week looking at it, and they need to be cleaned up, and you got to get your early spring fertilizer on it and get your sprinklers going and get it, you know, get the water to it. I mean, if they're only little pre-K kids, I think it should be fine.
Still got two weeks.
Hmm.
You know, little kids.
So, as long as they move and alternate spaces, you guys are good?
Yeah, try to, you know, move it around so they don't wear out one spot.
Have you been able to line anyone up to go down there and do the fertilizer, you had the same guys last year?
Oh, yeah, we have a contract.
Okay.
But I don't know, I don't think he starts this early. I'll have to reach out and see.
I really need to get highway down there to try and clean it with the mowers and clean it and get the leaves off of it, and then they come in and fertilize. Try and get them to do a lime application if they can this year, too. Not a lot of money.
And any contribution from GYS toward the maintenance of that field would be greatly appreciated?
We've also been asked by the Seacoast Flag Football Team for space possibly behind the Bagnell. I have told them no, because we haven't allowed non-Pentucket or Groveland groups to use our fields, because we don't have a fee structure in place, but I told them I would ask the Board.
Is there any place down the pines you can put them with a small fee?
We don't have a fee established. You'd have to establish a fee first, but we don't, the pines is pretty much fully booked.
It's also a liability issue.
I don't mean, I don't mean the baseball fields, I mean like the fields that are up toward the roads.
Utility fields?
What?
The utility fields?
Yeah, no, 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 up, up this end, with a little park in the area, there's going to be a tennis court. Can they use that area in there?
Well, that would interfere, I think lacrosse, I'm not sure when their season starts, but they start using it. Usually, the, most of the pines is booked through the summer for those fields.
Those are the issue of liability. I know that we usually have to present a certificate of insurability, naming the town as one of the insured, just in case someone were to get hurt. The town doesn't have any liability there. That was something I would insist on.
Well, that's a requirement as part of our permit, but like I said, they wouldn't be paying anything towards the maintenance, because they're not taxpayers, and then they're not, we don't have a fee structure in place, so...
Personally, I'm, I got a problem with that if someone from the town wants to come down and use that field, the person that actually paid to put that field together, to have it so they can use it, and then it's being used by a group that's completely disassociated with the town or the Kentucky District or, or something like anything associated with us.
And didn't necessarily pay taxes towards it either.
I had the same issue a couple of years ago when I went down to Washington Park to practice a little baseball and found a team from Salem, New Hampshire, playing a team from Methuen. Said, "You got to be kidding me, and I can't use the ball field I pay for, because I have two teams that don't even belong here playing in my field." I see it's 7 o'clock, so we'll have to move this discussion to later. Right now, we have a public meeting. So, we see it's 7 o'clock, so in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 28, Section 21 and 22, the Board of Selectmen hold a public hearing on the proposed road layout of Sunset Circle per the petition of GeoAmbient Consultants Incorporated on behalf of Wallace Capital LLC. So, I see the homeowner is here. I see Rebecca is here. Would anybody, I know we have a letter now from the homeowner, so would anybody like to begin? Tell us where we are in the process, if we're wrapped up or...
Of course. Thank you, Rebecca Bolden, town planner.
Of course. Thank you, Rebecca Bolden, town planner. So we have been in communication with the homeowner, Sarah and Steve Baker at Five Sunset Circle, and we have decided with the water contractor that May sixth would be the date that work would begin. So we have rectified that issue.
Great. Any other lingering issues that haven't been resolved to the satisfaction of everyone concerned?
At the last meeting, there was a homeowner that had mentioned Four Sunset Circle about some puddling in front of her driveway that she was concerned about. So I worked with the Highway Superintendent, Rennie Carroll, and we went out to the site and viewed it after a rainstorm. And we found that the actual improvement has allowed for the rain to be pushed up towards the gutter area and allowed the actual water to flow towards the catch basin. So it actually is deterring any puddling from that particular site. So it's an actual improvement than what was originally there.
Terrific. Anything else?
There's no other outstanding issues from the planning board, and I don't believe that there's any other homeowner issues unless somebody would like to speak on behalf of them.
So, Mrs. Baker, I assume you're happy with the results? And you as well?
Yes.
Great. This is the greatest, this is the easiest. I wish, everything in life was this easy. Do we need to vote? Is this the end of the matter?
You need to vote. I would say you should vote to set out the meets and bounds according to the original plan and to forward it on to town meeting for their acceptance.
Okay, I'll make a motion for what she said. So I don't have to repeat it.
Second is, so I don't have to repeat it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Terrific. We've got a bunch of happy campus here today. That's good. So with that, I guess we can move right into the Comcast Cable Contract and update from Cable TV Advisory Board. Do we have the chairman of that board?
Good evening. My name is Tracy Gulford. I'm the chairperson of the Groveland Cable TV Advisory Board. As far as update.
Yeah, we're just looking for a quick update on, on where you are, the timeline you've given us, if it's still in play, if it's waived at all.
We, we, in the process of finalizing our survey, and that should be finalized before your next meeting. So I'll get that to you. Well, we'll be looking to get it out a number of different ways, both written for people who want to do it the old-fashioned way, and we will be looking for like one of the online services, too, to try to get it out to as many people as possible. Starting with our next public meeting, we'll be incorporating a public comment period. So people who do want to come and address the board publicly will have the option to do that.
And when will that happen?
Huh?
Do you have a date for that yet?
No, I do not, but I'll let you know. We did have one public session here at Town Hall that I had off the record because I also want people to have the opportunity to come and speak to any of us, you know, not be recorded. I'll ask anyone at home who's viewing this now that if you have issues with Comcast, to make us aware of it. We do have a mailbox here at Town Hall for the Cable TV Advisory Board. And so we'll encourage people to put their problems in writing whenever possible. I have a call into Comcast and be looking to set up a date to do our ascertainment hearing, too. So it'll be, I will give you well enough advance that that's happening because I would like ideally a hundred people or more in this room for that. You know, people who want to speak their mind pro-con, you know, it's their cable. You know, we want people's input from the town.
Terrific. Any questions? Bill, Ed?
No.
Thank you very much for the update. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Keeps it in the loop. Now, the all-fund budget discussion. So Caitlin, or you sent me an X, the Excel file. Is that still valid?
Yep. I sent it to you when I printed off for the agenda.
Right, so nothing's changed. Good.
Correct.
Anybody care to begin the discussion? Miss Selectman Watson, would you like to?
No, but I'll reserve the chime in afterwards.
Selectman Dunn.
Are we going over the whole budget or are we just going over the people that are in front of us?
Both.
Both? So why don't we try and take care of the people that are in front of us first and then we can go over the boring part later?
None of it's boring.
Yeah, who said it's boring?
It's all money. Money is never boring.
Riveting.
Who would you, uh, would you like to call out first? Do you have a specific department that you have a question about? Seeing as this is a bunch of them here, do you have any order you'd like?
I don't have any questions. I was just gonna hear what they're here for.
Any order you want to take them in?
No, not yet. We start to talk and go through.
Who wants to go first?
Water, looks like. I thought he raised his hand.
Tom Cusick, superintendent for the water and sewer department. Hereby request.
You don't want nothing?
If I may.
A little confused.
The department's here. Water and Sewer and Council on Aging have put in salary increases in their budgets. The police department has requested an additional officer. And the Board of Health was requested by a board member to be here, which I don't know that anyone's here from Board of Health. They weren't sure if they were gonna make it. Those were the departments that I was asked to have here.
Okay, so obviously, we had a specific question for water, and that's why we've asked them to come.
Yeah, I'll start.
You okay?
So you put in a salary increase? Is that correct?
Yes, the contractual and non-contractual. The contractual speaks for itself.
Yep.
The non-contractual was, I guess the order was two percent for cost of living. We had a discussion during budgetary discussions with the, the Water and Sewer Commission, and I put in a request for three percent. It wasn't a, um, a request for, how should I say this, adversary? It was more of, you know, why not ask for something a little bit more in line with what we felt was more of a cost-of-living increase than what we're projecting for 2020 with healthcare costs and whatnot. So it was additional one percent.
Right.
They're not in that budget.
No. So for three percent, normally, the two percent is standard, right? If it's in the budget. But three percent is what you're requesting, if it's in the budget?
Correct.
And if it's not in the budget?
Well, we put it into the budget.
We put it into your, you're putting it into your budget and your line item. But the overall budget for the town, if it's not available at three percent?
Well, if it's not available at three percent, I mean, ultimately, this board makes that decision. You know, I mean, we have to, we have to live with that.
Well, I mean, like any conservative person, you live within your means, right? So me, as this board, is financially responsible to make sure that we have a zero end-line item when it comes to spending the budget, not a deficit. So if it's not feasible to have a three percent, maybe it's a two percent, maybe it's a one percent. But it's within the budget, and if the budget allows for it, then yeah, it would be considered, on my part, it would be considered. But it always comes down to what do we have, not what are we just gonna give and figure it out later?
So if you'll recall, though, the Water and Sewer set their own rates, so they fund their own budget.
Yeah, they're an enterprise fund, yeah.
I mean, the overall budget was within the two percent. So if that's what you're asking, if it fits into that bottom line, it does.
Selectman Watson?
I think it's, I think it's pretty tough to ask the other town departments to hold it at two percent and approve a three for the, for the water department. And I understand that they, it's coming out of their enterprise fund or what have you. But still, the town employees, the other town employees are being held at three percent. Although some of them are looking for more, but it's really, it's not right the way you, where you want to hold the other town departments, and there's numerous, to, to two, but you're going to approve, or they would like a three percent. I would make the recommendation to go to two, like everybody else.
Selectman Dunn.
Tom?
Yes.
Have you guys, or have you guys done any kind of extra training? Have you, has your guys gone out and done something more to justify the extra money?
Well, the contractual agreement is something that has steps into it. So if you, if you look at the budget, you know, there, if you remember, last year, they went up fourteen percent. So that was a contractual, you know, looking at their jobs, coming in with a new, with a new, with a new union contract and setting, setting those. So those, those guys are getting more above the two percent.
Are you talking about your help?
Yes, the cost-of-living increase.
So you're talking about office help right now?
Bill, if I may, so the request is for Tom and Patty?
Right, well, I'm just trying to.
Right, so the laborers have their union contract.
No, I understand. I, I, I'm just trying to, so it's basically the office help you're talking about?
And myself, yes.
Right, and yourself, right. So your help got a, a good-sized raise by joining the union, et cetera, et cetera. But on the same token, they had to opt their ante a little bit to get there, more or less.
Yep.
Most of the town people here get a two percent raise, as you probably know. And I just think if we start the one percent without backing it up, we may have it falling down the line. Everyone's looking for an extra one percent, you know what I mean? And I understand that, you know, we just hired a road commission. I've heard rumors saying, oh, you just hired a road commission, X amount of dollars, and, you know, other people in this town don't make that kind of money.
Correct.
And so we either need to isolate that between you and the board or your office, you know what I'm trying to say, where I'm getting at? If it's not fair.
I know exactly what you're getting at.
And if you don't feel, you don't feel it's fair, I think we need to have that conversation roughly between all of us.
Yeah.
And then, you know, I understand you've got to speak on behalf of your help as well.
Right.
But.
Yeah, I mean, it's a bit cumbersome, you know, when you're talking about, you know, it's, so I guess it really wasn't just a two percent increase across the board, right? Is that right? I mean, is that fair in saying that?
When we hired the road commissioner, are you just talking about?
Right, so when you looked at that position, you did more than just a two percent for your budget.
Because we set a criteria over and above what the past road commissioner was doing.
Yep.
And we, we set the ante high.
Sure.
And that person coming in the position knows what he's expected to do for the next ninety days. If it doesn't happen, then, you know, maybe, maybe he won't be here. But we probably shouldn't be going, discussing him. We should be discussing how you don't feel like you've been treated fairly.
Well, I think it's a matter of whether or not it was a contract or not. I mean, if the board negotiated a contract with someone separate, then yeah, I definitely wouldn't feel like I've been treated fairly.
There is no contract. He falls under the personnel policy, just like everybody else.
He's an employee at will.
So, I mean, maybe that's just a better way to look at it. I mean, maybe there should be. You know, maybe there should be, maybe, maybe what you should look at is possibly a contract that covers all department heads and look at it that way. I'm obviously not gonna get that tonight, but I'm saying long-term, you know, it happens all the time, just as it does with your union contracts. You've got a way to keep it consistent. Set parameters, set all those things within a collective bargaining unit, and you don't have to worry about it. Just a thought, you know, going forward. Because otherwise, it's, it looks, it looks piecemeal, it looks pieced together, and it's inconsistent.
Well, not speaking on behalf of anybody else, just us, the board and you, going forward, we should probably have a, a meeting between us if that's what you're looking for, you know what I'm trying to say?
Yeah.
Maybe that's gonna set the precedent down the road for everybody else, you know what I mean?
Yeah, absolutely.
And, and I agree with what you're saying. If you don't feel like you're being treated fairly, you go sit with your, whoever it is, have that conversation, and then it comes before us, you know what I mean?
And I've done that in the past. And it's gotten me nowhere. So I mean, that's, that's the decision of the board, right? If I sit with my board, my immediate board, who I report to, and they know what I do for a job, and then they make a recommendation and it goes to this board, and this board votes it down, and I have to, right? If it's just a, well, it's just because it's consistent with the rest of the group and everybody's getting two percent, I can certainly understand that. I, I, I get that. But there's readjustments within this industry all the time.
So I'll go back to what I originally said. If you're looking for over and above the two percent, me, I'm not gonna speak on behalf of these guys, me, I don't have a problem giving a cure as long as I know what I'm giving. If I, if I know that Tom's doing X amount more and, and what have you, his job title changed or whatever, or he's saving the town millions of dollars and bringing in all kinds of chemicals in the, you know, into our system or whatever, I don't have a problem with that. I don't. I didn't see that in front of me. I'm not speaking on behalf of anyone here, just me. I didn't see that. I just saw more, and that's why I'm asking you the question.
Yeah, well, I don't know if that's something that's an executive session kind of conversation.
Very well, maybe. I don't know.
I don't know. So if it's not, then maybe that's pushes the, the, you know, maybe my, why you might want to have some sort of collective bargaining so that it does go into executive session. It's treated just like everyone else.
Yeah, I would say that's probably an executive session discussion. But I will say that the overall assumption for municipalities across the board is that every year you automatically get two percent.
Cost of living, correct.
Automatically, right? Whether it's in the budget or, you know, make it happen type of thing, go find the money. And it's not always the case, right? You have a set amount of money, and that's what you have to live within. And sometimes you don't get the two percent. Sometimes the things are good, you get three percent. But again, this board is tasked with being financially responsible and adequate to the taxpayers, right? We're held to the taxpayers as far as making sure that we spend appropriately and within our means. And just because the assumption is that everyone get, I'm not saying you, just in general, I'm saying the assumption is that I automatically get two percent is not really the appropriate assumption in my eyes, right? Like Bill's saying, you know, what has someone done to actually earn that extra two percent?
Sure.
Is it just, well, I show up every day and, you know, I kind of do stuff? Well, okay, well, you get paid for that, but I show up every day, I do this, I do this, I do this, I do this. All right, well, that's, that's exceptional, right? So you do get that extra pay in my eyes that you've earned it, not just, well, it's two percent, I get two percent every year. Again, I'm not saying that's what you do. I'm just saying in general, I think the feeling is municipality that you get.
Right, but historically, I, I've done that. You know, I've done a, you know, this is my professional achievements. That goes to my immediate board. My immediate board looks at that. Now, if that falls on deaf ears or that doesn't just, maybe it's the process, okay? Maybe that's kind of what the missing link is, that it's broken where, you know, you guys don't even know what I am on paper, right?
What do you mean?
Like what, like what you're saying, like what I've, what I've done, what I've achieved, all of those, all of those things.
I know what you, yeah, I know what you do in general.
Right.
But the specifics of what you do.
The eleven years that I've been here, all of that.
No one's ever really told me anything more than, this is what Tom's the department head.
Right, so that's really tough for me to be able to, you understand?
To quantify that and say, hey, I do this extra, I do this, I do this.
I can quantify it, but it's, it's the process of sitting down with this board, since this board makes a decision on salaries.
Right, because if that doesn't happen, it's just, well, I want a raise. Right, because if that doesn't happen, it's just, well, I want a raise.
Absolutely.
So.
Why just give money, why just throw money, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect that.
Right, but I think you're, you're right. The process is broken, and that information that disconnect is apparent, because other than knowing the department that you're at and kind of what you do.
So, if, yeah, well, I think, I think part of the issue is the process. I don't think just putting in a salary increase in a budget is the proper way to go. The request should be made to the Board of Selectmen to meet and discuss your salary, separate of the budget, and then in fact, if they approve it, then you put it in your budget. I think this is kind of the backwards way to do it, to just put it in your budget and hope it gets approved, when even if the Finance Board recommends that, they still set the salary. So even if the Finance Board approves it, doesn't mean you get it until it comes before this board. So I just think it should be separate from the budget process, you requesting to come before the board and have that conversation.
Right, and I, and I do take that process into account. Like someone before us has approved this, or this meeting has happened, and they approved this, and they're in favor of it, and I do take that into account. But I agree that, that, that whole process should probably be readjusted.
One of the things that I will say from me sitting here, the years I've sat here, and I'm not trying to be mean when I say this, but the Water Department kind of does their own thing in that room. Okay? And I think when I was the chairman, I asked, can we get you guys to come before us? Or can we get you guys to go on camera and have your meetings on camera, so the town people get to see this and see what goes on? That never took place. I don't know why, I don't care what happened, I don't know. My point is, when you run that way, I think you're going to be treated that way. And I think that's what's happened. I think that whole department isn't out in the forefront enough. And like you said, maybe you feel like you should have an executive session. There's the chairman, whatever, you got to go with the process. If I was in your shoes, I'd probably go that route.
Well, but, but also understand that my board is the head of the department.
Right.
Not me.
Right.
Okay, let's make that clear. Per your personnel procedure manual and how you structured your town, that's the way it works. So prior, I've been here eleven years. Prior to this board being a five-member board, and then it was a three-member board, this board always had to, okay, anything like that. But whether there's a broken link between communication of the boards or not, I don't, I can't answer that.
Right.
That's for you guys to talk to the board and figure that out.
Or your board needs to talk to us.
Exactly.
So there's a broken link, is what I'm saying. And I'm not going to say this is broken, I'm not going to say that's broken, there's a broken link. We need to put it together. I tried putting that together. I can honestly say I tried. I tried getting everybody in this town hall to come in, and let's have open dialogue conversation, and I don't know what happened. But all I'm going to say is.
And what, and what kind of avenue?
Just what you're talking about, not, you know, if you get any problems.
Like an all-boards meeting?
Coming into the, getting in front of the camera and opening up.
Oh.
And then, if you have any problems with your board, come in and talk to us. Come sit down, we're here. You know what I'm trying to say? And that's what I was trying to do, for whatever reason, it didn't happen. But maybe we should have a comment, maybe we should invite the board and have them come in front of us. I've never seen them, I've never seen them in front of me, since I've sat on this board. So, and, and again, you have help, you know, you're talking about your help in the office. They should maybe have a raise. I don't know, because I can't have that conversation, I haven't had that conversation. And that's all I'm saying.
I, I think the, I think you're right, I think the process is, is not right. I don't think you should be here. I think it should be the commissioners should be here pushing for a raise for their employees, if they think so. Basically, what this looks like is that it's you yourself are putting in, you think you deserve a three percent raise. But the commissioners should be writing a letter or come in here and presenting why they think that you should be getting one percent more than some of the other town boards. You've got, I'm not going to mention them, but there's numerous boards here. And I'm sure that every single one of the, the boards or the commissions, the supervisors, think that their employees should be getting a raise, that they all, that all of the town workers, they're, they're no different than you are. They all work hard, they're, they're not slacking off. They probably all deserve more money than what they're getting. But there's only so much money to go around.
Sure.
And I think, I think you were sending a wrong message to, I'll, I'll name them. Board of Assessors, Town Clerk, Highway, maybe, well, Highway's a little exempt. Board of Health, Council on Aging. If you get, if you put in for a three, and the others are only getting two, and I would expect, if we approved it, that we're going to see all the other boards in here looking for a raise for their employees that we can't afford. And I, and I still think that you're, as I said, I think that your board should be here pushing for it, and not you. And telling us what you do above and beyond what you normally would do to deserve more than what other departments are getting.
I'd be happy to have that conversation.
Yeah, Tom, I have to echo Selectman Watson's sentiments. The only thing that's missing here is a letter from your supervisors. Something that I would do in the private sector, if I'm trying to get one of my employees a raise, they say you got a cap at a two percent, I'm going to write a letter to my boss saying why I think this employee is exemplary, why I think they deserve a little more, and state the reasons, you know, they saved us money here, they cut processes here. And I think your commission is doing you a disservice by sending you out here like the Christians at the Lions, instead of them getting up here and saying, Tom deserves this because A, B, C, D, X, Y, Z. I feel you're the wrong guy to be here. Your supervisor should be here singing your praises and explaining why three percent is not only justified, but it's, it's absolutely necessary in this circumstance, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, in fairness to them, I just, it was kind of a, you know, an email that came from Denise last week. There wasn't a lot of information on this, it was just show, I mean, this is a bit unorthodox, why, honestly. Never done this before, so.
We kind of live in an unorthodox world all of a sudden, so.
Well, and I think that's, that's, that's kind of circles back to having collective bargaining. I think it just becomes messy when you start moving things around. You talk about consistency, you talk about other departments and wanting to treat everything the same. Then I think that ultimately, it would probably be, be better for everyone. If it, I'm just speaking for myself now, I'm not speaking for anyone else. But just looking at it, that seems to be the norm. If you usually have some sort of collective bargaining, that's a, it's a document that governs everyone, and that's what you make, and that all happens. Not everyone's happy, you know? But it's usually a process that you go through, just like you did with the, with the Highway Commission, the new Highway Superintendent, and you go out and you try to get job classifications, you look at those qualifications, and you set your, set your mark for Groveland, and, and you live within those means, because you're trying to get good qualified people. So it's about, you know, having a contract that's going to get that for the town. It's not about Tom working here, or, or anyone else, you know, personally. It's about having a contract. And, you know, I, I feel we did that when we did, when me and Denise sat down, and we negotiated the contract for the guys. Now the town has a document that they can go by, this is the criteria, this is, this is what you need to meet, and you're going to get staffing, you should, that meets those qualifications, and you have what you need for the town.
Yeah, but the word contract is, in, in the context of the road commission, it doesn't apply. It's, we shouldn't bandy about that word, because it doesn't exist. We changed, moved from an elected position to an appointed position, so effectively, the person is hired. We put out a job description at a rate, we had people apply for it. We chose one, they accepted the jobs under the terms and conditions of the job description, and a salary that we advertised for, and they accepted it. Now they're an employee at will. Tomorrow, he can say, I don't want to be here anymore, goodbye. Next week, we could say, job performance isn't there, goodbye. It's kind of a completely different thing. He's not working under any kind of contract, so.
Oh, I understand that. I'm just saying a contract that would govern all department heads, so you see that a lot. Just like you would have it, just like you have contracts for water operators, or highway operators, or police department, all of that.
Tom, are you, are you requesting to go to a union? Because that's what a collective bargaining agreement is.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
So you're talking about forming a union?
I'm just, I'm just saying myself, that's what I would think would be the best way to deal with it. I'm not talking about anyone else.
Well, but the, so the personnel policy is that contract that governs the employees. I mean, that is what governs all the employees that are non-contractual.
Right, I understand that. I, I understand. I just don't think it covers everything. I'm just being honest with you. When I look at that, I haven't been in here before, when, you know, when you started going through the document, but I just don't think it covers everything when it, when it comes to department heads. That's just my personal opinion.
It's, it's a document, it's in the works. If you have something to say, you know, it's best to do it now, before that's written in stone. It, it's a fluid document, nothing, again, is, is permanent. So if you have some suggestions that might make it better, we'd rather hear them now than later on.
Sure.
Can't promise that they'll be in there, but.
Right.
You know, anything that makes, that, you know, promotes more thought, more dialogue, more discourse, is always a good thing. So please, let me know, send me an email, tell me what you think.
Yeah, I have, you know, over the years, I've collected other contracts and languages. It's pretty much, most municipalities operate like that.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be the first to tell you, I, I, I try, I used to read mine, so I found I was really lousy at it, so I stopped doing it. So you really got to tell me and put your thoughts down in words, or email or something, and then, you know, we'll do our best to incorporate those as best as we can, if they may, as long as they're reasonable, make sense. Can't promise anything, but I'm always willing to listen, I think, just as everybody else here.
Yeah, I mean, this would have been good a month ago, when we started that process. But I think we're putting that on hold.
It wouldn't have been done before the fiscal year term, because we don't want to mess up that apple cart in the middle of a.
Right, so you do have time, which is good, to make some suggestions to add, and what do we cover and who. You probably have, what, three months?
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not, still not sure it's going to affect, impact him this year. It's probably.
Fiscal twenty?
Fiscal twenty-one. I don't know, I don't know if anything we can make.
Well, you're setting fiscal twenty now.
Right.
Right, that's what I'm saying, probably fiscal twenty-one.
Right. But it would be better to get that sooner, so that can be looked over, and then try to incorporate that, who it would cover and what it would cover.
Again, that's just my thought, I have not talked with any other.
Well, your thoughts are just as important as anybody else's.
Yeah, I haven't talked to any other department heads, that, you know, that might be watching this.
I'm no expert on personnel policy, but I would like to hear some information from.
And again, I, I wish, because we are at a disadvantage. We don't know what you do. We don't know how you add value to the town. I'll be the first to admit, I, I, I'm an accountant, I'm a finance guy. Ask me a numbers question, I can give you an answer. You ask me how much pressure is in the line, I got to call you, right? So if we could get the commissioners who know what you do, how you do it, how you save the town money, how you add value to your job, that would go a long way in helping us understand the justification behind the added, you know, raise over what everyone else would, would ask for. And it would certainly help me understand what's behind their rationale, and help us hopefully understand better what you do and how you add value to the town.
Denise, when do we have to have this, his budget locked in by?
Next Monday.
Next Monday.
Everything has to be done by next Monday.
It doesn't give you much time, but maybe you can get a letter over from your commissioners or something, to answer my question, anyway.
I, I think we should ask them to rescind the three and go to, and have them go to two. And have that come from, from the superintendent, to, the same as everybody else. And let, and let him, let him make the withdrawal, if he would do that.
We do only have one week, we're going to have a meeting next Monday to finalize these, so we don't have a lot of time. Time is not.
Tonight, or this week?
No, time is not our ally right now.
Well, he doesn't set the budget, we do, and the Finance Board does, so we don't have to hold him up all night.
No.
No, I mean, it's, this isn't, you know, knocking me over. I kind of figured that you were going to stay in line with two percent, and this was going to spark a conversation, so.
No, but I think you should know that we've heard your, your argument. I think it's valid, I think your commissioners aren't doing you justice. I think they could help you out a lot more if they helped us understand how you do what you.
Very good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Who is next that we wanted to? It's never easy.
We got a volunteer.
We got a volunteer, okay.
Let's try to get out of here by midnight.
Good evening, Lynn Stanton, Council on Aging Director. Probably sick of seeing me, I've been at the last two Board of Selectmen meetings, representing the Personal Advisory Board. Tonight, I'm talking about my budget. I'd like to welcome all five members of the Council on Aging Board, who are here to vouch for our request for a salary increase. I've never presented one, a request such as this in the past. I think our efforts over the past year, past couple of years, have been outstanding, particularly as we sought a new senior center and all that that entailed. Lot of extra hours, lot of extra meetings, a lot of effort. We have a new outreach worker who's been doing an outstanding job. Excellent at what she does. Our program coordinator has also stepped up to the plate this year. Again, just outstanding. In terms of what Tom Cusick just indicated with regard to the Water Department, and with regard to this process, I agree that perhaps this would be better served in executive session, but because we're non-union, non-contract, that's not permissible under the executive session law, under general meeting, open meeting law. But it's a little awkward to do that before everyone. Why is it, you know, you're seeking more than your, your other fellow workers in the building? I don't think that this approach that we've taken in the past has been fair. I think that, you know, Selectman Watson indicated that, you know, people should be treated the same throughout the building. I don't think historically that's been the case. We can look at the planner position, which went up twenty-eight point five percent. Selectman O'Neill, being a numbers man, you can certainly relate to this. Custodian position went up a hundred and thirty percent. Cemetery part-time wages went up a hundred and thirty-three percent. Highway Department, new position, that went up nineteen percent. Water Department in fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, the office manager, that went up fifteen point five percent. As did last year, the staff of the Water Department who went union, went up fourteen percent. So I don't think this is something new. I think there's perhaps a selection in that approach. And I'm here requesting basically, in addition to what everybody else is receiving, in Town Hall, we're asking for an additional thirty-five hundred dollars. The Council on Aging is a service department. We're not really quantifiable, if you will, in comparison to perhaps an enterprise department, such as the Water Department. What we provide is service. I think, given the size of our department, and given the size of our budget, that we do an outstanding job. So I'm not going to beat you all to death with, with the excellence of things that occur in our department, or really in all of Town Hall periodically. But this year, at this time, I'm requesting an additional thirty-five hundred dollars. I hope that, along with the Finance Board, that the Board of Selectmen this time might actually put some teeth behind the merit in a merit increase. So that's it for me.
Selectman Watson, any questions?
Yes.
Looking at what was appropriated for 2018, which was $123,004, and you spent $121,210 to date, is that right?
Basically.
And that $3,500 is to get you up to less than what's appropriated for fiscal year 19, is that right?
And it's, what we're talking about is three positions.
So each person gets about $1,100?
A little, a little, a little more, a little more in mind, because I work more hours.
So what is the total budget that you're requesting for fiscal year 20, then?
$134,006.
Fiscal year 20, I'm asking for $131,104. Plus that additional $5,393. No, I'm asking, I'm asking for $131,104. That's what I submitted to you, Denise.
That's what's in here.
$134,006 was your revised budget, after you met with the Finance Board.
Oh, and that was, the addition that Denise mentions is money to contribute to a revolving account for our van, because we did not go in the queue this year for a new van, so those additional monies that Denise just mentioned that rounded us up is for items, is for dollars to go into our revolving account.
And that was a conversation we had about a month ago, that we...
Not to go on the revolving account.
It's gonna have its own, it's gonna have its own separate revolving account, as I understood it.
It will not have a revolving account. It is not a revolving account item. It is a budgetary line item for van maintenance.
Okay, separate from our revolving account? I, I stand erect and corrected.
What was that?
So the total budget...
Maintenance line item, is that what we're calling it?
The maintenance line item is $5,000.
Right, $5,000, and that's what we decided about a month or a month and a half ago, that we would rather do that than go spend $60,000 on a new vehicle that we don't need.
Correct, yes. That was one that went before our Finance Committee.
Right, okay. So your requested budget this year with that is $134,006, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
So that's the number we're working on?
Yes.
Is it for now?
So we're talking $3,500 or whatever, forget the van. And your office, as far as the help, just help me.
We, in terms of how many folks are in, on staff?
No, how, has any of their job titles changed? Have they, I know you kind of briefly went over real quick.
Nope.
So...
Nope, those positions have remained the same. Our outreach, outreach position is partially funded through our Formula Grant, which we receive from the state. So our newsletter funds, is funded through part of that grant, as well as eight hours every two weeks for our outreach workers. So that's grant-funded. So that doesn't come out of, out of the town's budget.
So with the normal 2%, I'm having a hard time finding, is it only a half a percent more that you're looking for?
An additional 3, for a total of...
Over, above the 2%?
Correct, yes, sir.
Each person?
The, the director position, the program coordinator position, and the outreach position.
So each, you're looking for 3, 3% additional over the 2%?
Yes.
So it's really 5%?
Yes. Just as a caveat, this in is, again, first time I've come before Board of Selectmen or Finance Committee requesting such an increase.
And what did Finance say?
Finance hasn't voted. They're meeting Wednesday, next Wednesday.
They're meeting this Wednesday?
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
I thought Monday the budget had to close, though.
The warrant has to close next week. Everything will be done next week. That's why they're meeting, and that's why the Finance Board is meeting, next week.
They're voting on their stuff after we do?
Yes, you're supposed to present it to them, and then they consider your request, and then they vote on it.
Because I wanna make sure that that's the right process, because she's asking us to make sure that this gets done before then. Well, forget it. I just, I wanna make sure I know what I'm doing.
I'm with ya.
Your recommendations go to the Finance Board, for them to consider when they make their recommendations.
Selectman Watson?
I'm doing the same, actually.
Okay, I'll ask you a question. Was 5% just arbitrary?
Actually, it started with 7. Boom! That's, that's how it began, that's how it began. That's how it began.
So it began at 7, worked its way down to 5?
Because we are the smallest department in town. Apart from the cemetery, you'll notice an unintentional segue. Council on Aging, our, our low men on the totem pole, are, because we are not union, we didn't have the opportunity to have positions renegotiated. I put before the Finance Committee a salary survey that we do as part of the Merrimack Valley COA Directors, indicating what other towns and cities in our general, you know, 35, 36 community region receive. That was submitted to, to FinCom as a method of looking at what we've got.
It's in your books.
I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm also with Tom Cusick with regard to the possibilities of, you know, sitting before the Board of Selectmen and talking about contractual issues, perhaps union issues. You know, I've spoken with Denise, we have just sort of informally about, there, there are no job classifications for non-union, non-contractual employees in town that permit you to grow by steps, to increase knowledge through, you know, education or workshops, and, you know, that sort of thing. There are no perks to longevity. So I think that would be useful, because it's interesting tonight that contractual employees and union employees don't come before the Board of Selectmen on public TV and chat about their efforts and their excellence or not. It's kind of an awkward situation, as you can imagine.
Right, but if no one, if you're not gonna fight for yourself, no one else will.
You got it, so that's why I'm here. And that's why my board members are here.
Yep, yep, and if I can, Bill. I'll say the same thing I just said to Tom. You know, if I could afford it, I'd give everyone 5 or 7%, but that's not...
But some years, you don't have any trouble giving others large increases, I mean, large increases. You didn't have any trouble giving water and sewer last year 14%.
That was last year.
And this is this year.
And this is this year.
I wouldn't say we didn't have any trouble.
But it occurred.
Which is interesting is when you sit on...
And it occurred, and it was done.
Right, what's interesting is when you sit on this side of the table, everything is multiplied in complexity, right?
I hear ya.
On that side of the table, it's like, hey, I wanna do this, I want this...
Hence why some folks don't re-up, if you know what I mean.
Oh, yeah, well, I got two more years, so, one, one second. So when it comes down to budget, for me, I run my influence on this board the way I run my house. If I don't have money for something...
Absolutely.
It doesn't get purchased.
Absolutely.
Or it doesn't get funded, or we don't go on a vacation.
Right, right, you are. So let's look at how we spend money in the town of Groveland. That's your task.
Which is what we do, right, which is what we do every March, April timeframe. And it's funny that, you know, we get criticized a lot for this position, which is, which is funny, but we put in a ton of hours reading this material and talking about it, and then meeting every Monday night for the next three or four weeks to, to get the budget for the town people done, right? And it's not an easy process.
No, it's not.
And everybody comes to us, like you, who deserves a pay increase, and shows their merits, and wants to kind of come in and fight for themselves, and I get it, I would do it too. But unfortunately, it's just, it's not always available.
Don't say no yet, Mike.
I didn't say no. I said it's not always available. That's a good word, right? Not always available.
So, in all fairness, what you just said, what happens is, and I'll try to do this the right way, it's when we get our back put against the wall, when you've got a union that comes to you, and they wanna become unionized, and your back's against the wall. That's when the 14% raises come. And what you're saying, in all fairness to you guys, you should get more money, and now what's happened, because this town is changing, it's, it's changing, we have a new highway, this, that, and everything, and things are changing, and the older people are not getting, they think, treated fairly, which, if I was in your shoes, I would agree with you 100%. You know what I mean?
The beauty of, the beauty of unions and contracts is its strength and protection.
Exactly, exactly. So what I was saying to you was...
Us free-range employees, it's tricky.
Right.
I like that term.
And the thing that, before we get to this point, we should have a conversation, and I know it's hard, because you have unions, and you have non-unions, and you have elected and appointed and everything else, but it would be nice to have the conversation with the Finance Board and this board before we get to this point.
Right.
We're here every other Monday night, we're not here full-time. That's why I've been an advocate for town manager, because these are the conversations that would happen. These conversations would have happened. But on, on the same token, it's hard. You're in an odd position right now, to stand there fighting for your fight, and you have to do it in cameras for all the town people.
It's so awkward.
It's awkward, and it's not fair to you. But, you know what I'm saying? You're not looking for a lot of money, but on the same token, I would feel better if you could say to me, "Bill, we have done this, this, and this, and this."
It's a little awkward to do that in a public way, it's weird. But our Board of Selectmen is, excuse me, our Council on Aging Board is here.
Which is very smart of you guys to bring your board in, because they, they can speak up for you.
Ron Mertens, Council on Aging.
Ron Mertens, Ten Madison Avenue, Groveland. I moved to this town 11 years ago, and went on the Council on Aging Board about six months after I moved here. I've been on the board all that time, except for one year when I had to go off, because our bylaws save I had to. I was Chair of the Board for eight years. I've worked with the staff in the Council on Aging that full amount of time, and I have the highest regard for them. You've asked the question, you know, why would they deserve a merit increase? Let me point out one thing that happened a few years ago. 10 years ago, not you people, but the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee reduced our budget by $7,000, back in, 10 years ago, because we had two outreach workers at that time. One left for another position, and the town said, "No, you can't replace that person." And we never have. So that was $7,000 cut from our budget 10 years ago, and it's never been restored, obviously. In addition, about three or four years ago, our director took on the position as the Shine Counselor for people. Now, as you know, we deal with, we offer programs and services for roughly 30% of the population in Groveland, the elderly members of the town. Amongst that, it's things like Medicare, Mass. Health, terms like HMO, PPO, Medicare Advantage, Medicare Supplement, and if you don't deal with healthcare, you don't know what those terms are. And if you're an 85-year-old individual who lives by yourself, doesn't have family close by, who do you turn to for help when you're faced with those things? Well, you turn to the Shine Counselor at the Groveland Council on Aging. And that's, Lynn spends a lot of time working with people, and she took on that job voluntarily several years ago, took the training for it, has to retake training every year to remain certified, so she has increased the amount of work that she does. In addition, the outreach worker deals with people, again, a lot of healthcare problems, insurance problems, medical problems. And you may think, well, it's not important, it's not gonna face you. Well, I got news for you folks, you may think it doesn't, but five, 10, 20 years from now, good luck, because we're all gonna face it at one time or another. I worked in the not-for, not-for-profit sector for over 15 years, in the healthcare field, in healthcare finance, and I still don't understand it. So how can the normal person do it? And that's what, that's one of the many things that the Council on Aging, Aging does to help people. And that's why our board strongly feels that our staff does deserve an increase. You, you said you're looking for details, why somebody deserves a merit increase. I think those are some of the reasons.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Does anyone else on that board wish to?
Good evening, I'm Frank Sadowski, Chairman of the COA Board, and 206th Annual Circle Groveland Mass. I've been volunteering for the Council on Aging for at least 11 years, and I teach art. What a wonderful experience it is to give someone else something to do with themselves, to grow, to develop. This is what the Council on Aging does. It gives everyone the opportunity to breathe, to stand up, to take a say in what they do, instead of being told to. This is what the Council on Aging does. It gives vitality, hope, love, comfort, joy, and entertainment to people that truly deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure, go ahead. I guess we have another question for Ms. Stanton. You're popular tonight.
I'm laughing, I said, Jeff, can I go before you? And he said, yes. So I thank you very much, Chief Gillen. He's sitting there going, why did I say yes? Sir.
So you have three employees?
We have five.
Five.
We have one out on medical leave. So we have two part-time van drivers.
In, in here?
Yeah, two part-time van drivers who work for us.
They go and they drive the van, how's the office health?
Oh, myself, program coordinator, and outreach worker. Outreach worker is 10 hours a week, program coordinator is 30. Those, those two positions also work additional hours, thanks to the Formula Grant, and I'm here for 37-ish.
Is that less than more? 37-ish?
Ish. Never less-ish.
Well, it's never less.
Typical, how many hours? I mean, it's more than 37 by the chuckles in the audience, so...
Yeah, it depends on what's going on. You know, many weeks, it's like 37, 39, that neck of the woods. Sometimes 40, sometimes 42. But it, it, that's mostly dependent on when things are happening, when bad things happen to good people.
I can't speak on behalf of your, your office health. I can say how I see, and I'm not here a lot, but I'm here enough to see what goes on. I see what you do, I've dealt with people that deal with you, and I have the utmost respect for you, and I'm sure that the people that work in your office are the same, and work the same as you do. I can't speak on behalf of the van drivers, I don't know them, but...
They're great guys, actually. We're really blessed, as, as it stands, yeah.
I won't stand up for something I don't believe, and I think most people in this town believe that. I do believe that, you know, you standing here, you came before us for a van, we explained we can't do the van, we talked through it, you didn't fight us, you didn't push us. I mean, I think that, me, I'll speak on behalf of myself, I think you deserve more money. I don't know if it's 5% you deserve, but I think you, you know...
It's probably more like 15, but that, but, but that's another story. I appreciate your kind words, Bill, very much.
And I don't want them to be kind words, I want them to be words that, from me viewing what goes on, and me personally viewing, I, I definitely think that it's well-deserving. Can the town afford 5% or whatever?
I hear you.
You know what I mean? I mean, unfortunately, as you know, our school takes most of our budget, we don't have the money to throw around. Can we throw some money your way? Personally, I think we probably could find it. I'll say, I'll stop there, they say I talk too much.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate that.
Yes, Selectman Watson?
Well, about a month ago, we, we approved a merit raise for the custodian here at the Town Hall, and the explanation at the time was that the person supervisor put him in for a, for a raise based upon, above and beyond the Call of Duty, things that he was doing, that it was saving the town money. I think we heard from two members of the Council on Aging tonight, who basically said the same thing about, about these employees. You know, it's, it's, it's very tough to approve one when you have, when you said that you were, we were approving it because the person supervisor put him in for a merit raise. And I, I thought... And I, I thought at the time that it was the wrong thing to do because we were going to get requests from other departments, and here, about a month later, we get another, we get a request from the other department, another department, so it, it's very tough. We already approved one, and now we're getting, we're getting another one, and we probably have others.
Well, here's the thing, we, we all have to submit, so our submission-
I'm not blaming you.
No, 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 but I mean-
I'm just saying that the, the members of the Council on Aging supported, supported your request, basically the same thing that the custodian supervisor did for, for him, and we gave him a raise, and so I-
Well, well, our, our, our budget submissions occurred at the end of December, so what, what happened with the custodian position is sort of a separate thing. And that increase in hours and so on and so forth, that, that's much needed. I mean, when you work here every day, to have a clean place to come to kind of matters when everything else is kind of old and, yeah, kind of beat up. I mean, I'm, I'm, my, both of our offices are, are filled with hand-me-downs from, actually from the Police Department from like fifteen years ago. So, so to have a clean and, um-
We're not talking about the custodian.
No, but I'm, I'm talking about, you know, that, nobody's, nobody's whining about that, let's put it that way.
I, I understand that, but here we have the same, we have the same request based upon the same circumstances, and I, I think it would be tough to turn it down.
Then don't. Thank you.
See, no one has asked us any more questions of the Council on Aging? I guess we can move on and ask Chief Gillen to come before us and justify his request for a, another full-time officer, I believe.
As far as this goes, do we need to talk about this later, before Monday?
Absolutely. We've got to, it's all going to be tied up by Monday, for sure.
So should we start the discussion now, or do you want to, well, or do you want to just talk and at the end of the night go over it again?
I think we keep moving forward with the other departments just so we're not here, and then are here till midnight.
All right.
And then we've always, we've always had Monday, next Monday as well, to discuss it ad nauseam if we, if we care to. Chief, nice to see you again.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members.
Open it up anytime you'd like, we understand that you, you're looking to make some moves, some personal moves.
There was a, a couple things. Again, I was able to submit a responsible budget working with the Finance Committee and working with Denise. There were a couple things that may have raised some attention. One was a, I was hoping to lease a pursuit-rated pickup truck, and then add an officer in the pickup truck, working with Denise again. I've taken that off my request for now, just understanding the budget process. That was a request because we have two, I'm sorry, three 2007 SUVs that we're utilizing, and I wanted to get rid of all three of those, and buy just one pickup, I wanted to lease it over three years, and then I could buy it for a dollar. And that would be a multi-use vehicle, that would be used for the emergency management department to tow the trailer, use it in storms, it would be used for undercover, it would be used to transport items out to the range, it'd be used for the ACO, we wouldn't have to put animals inside a cruiser anymore, dead or alive. So it would be a multi-purpose vehicle, and I just hope that maybe we can have that discussion at some later time, and working again with Denise, maybe even this year, if I can find a grant or some money within my budget where it's a lease, I can afford it. So I, I'm going to ask that that be removed in line with, with the recommendation from Denise that I think was given to you.
The vehicle leased for thirteen, seven thirty?
Yes, sir. And if you notice, all the other expense line items, I pretty much, I level-funded. I did that in hopes of first getting a pickup and, and the new officer, but I still would certainly stick to that because, working with Finance, this line item idea that, that I guess was really introduced by Denise is working. It's, I'm really able to tighten up the budget and be, really respond, give the best service to the town of Groveland for the, for the best bang of their buck, so. But to get to the, the part that is an increase, it is the officer. It's been several years since we've added a full-time officer. In fact, several years ago when we did, we added, we needed two. We have two full-time open positions. Again, being fiscally responsible, we, we got the one, and we said, "We'll wait and try again for the second officer," and that's why I'm here tonight. What's happening is the increase in training and, and money to have reserve officers is becoming problematic. As you saw tonight, an officer resigned. That's the third one in the last few months, and every one of those officers, if you, if you talk to them or look in their letters, they said they wish they could be here full-time. That last one, he got promoted and, and moved on to his other job. The other one went to Manchester full-time, and then the third officer got deployed, and she hopes to maybe work here full-time. So, it's not so much they don't want to be here, it's just we're a training ground for these folks. And what's happened most recently is that the firearms training went from twenty-four hours to fifty-six hours. So every time I get a new officer, we have to get them all classroom in the range for fifty-six hours. The Reserve Academy has increased significantly, it's, I don't know, it's maybe like six months now to train. In the ma, the Mass Police Training Council is really moving in the direction, you're going to see reserves are going to be a thing of the past as far as working the way we work them in Groveland. So this isn't going to add an extra officer on the street, it's going to fill an open position that's filled with reserves right now with a full-time officer. So forty hours a week, basically, there's a reserve that fills a position. And so in that, he works with a full-time officer, if that full-time officer takes a vacation day, now we have two reserve officers working. And I just think that, and policing today is as complicated as it is, the way Groveland's growing, that the town certainly deserves full-time trained officers, and I think it's fair to the officers, too. I think we put too much on the reserve officers to, to go work a plumbing job with a wrench in the hand and then come to work in Groveland with a gun on their side. The, the job is becoming more professional, and it's just going to be an outdated mark. And again, a lot of communities are already getting away from it, and as you all know, with the growth that's going on in Groveland, my concern is we're going to wake up someday and not be in the right position as far as policing. We're doing very well, I think that officers now are trained better than they ever have been. They're more professional, trained and educated. This would certainly be something that I would strongly ask for, that I think it's a needed position. What I did is took money from the reserve account to offset the expense of the new officer, and I tried to save some of that money to add a third officer at times on the three to eleven. Right now, we just have the two, and when Sergeant Riley's doing license, licensing permits, quite often she's called away, and the resident is left standing there in the hallway or has to reschedule because the officer on the street can't be left alone for certain calls. So I'd like to maybe now and then have a third officer, and we're getting to the point where we're that busy. So then most recently, working with Denise, she asked again to tighten this up even more. I took another ten thousand off of maybe what's in front of you from that reserve account to again support this request for a full-time officer.
The spreadsheet in your packet is the most up-to-date.
That's moved from eighty, ninety-two down to eighty-two, one sixty, that most recent?
Yes.
What, what's, what's the net, net effect, do we know? We're going to drop two reserves and add one full-time?
It wouldn't, it's the position, one position that's filled forty hours a week where the reserve would be filled with, with a full-time officer.
And the reserves' hours would be cut back?
Yes, and that's why I'm able to take money out of the reserve line item, and to help offset the expense of a full-time officer.
So do we know what the net, net effect on that is, up, down? It's got to be up a little bit?
Oh, it's up a little bit, yeah.
Because there's going to be benefits included?
That's what I was going to say, is that, that doesn't include benefits, or anything?
That doesn't include benefits, so you'll see on the health insurance line has been increased.
The benefit-eligible as a full-time employee.
Right. It's so hard to tell from that healthcare line because you always expect, you know, ten, twelve percent increase, so it's hard to tell if that's just normal or we're adding-
It's both. We have the new rates, and then I assumed one or two people just, their natural open enrollment would join.
So salary-wise, the, the net effect is, I mean, he's reducing the-
Yeah, so he's reducing the reserves by twenty-five thousand. Jeff, what's your full-time, new step-one patrolman?
It would be sixty-two thousand.
Sixty-two.
And then, if they, well, I would, I would want them to have an education, so it'd be like a fifteen hundred dollars for the year, but it would be, I think it's sixty-two, I can tell you exactly. It would be sixty-two, four-twelve. That's considering they'd be on midnights, and they would get a ten percent differential. What that also did is takes one of the full-time officers that's on now, that's going to the top step, his pay would go down because he would go off of midnights a couple nights a week. So if this didn't go through, I have to raise that officer's pay that's going to stay on the midnights to reflect that. So there's a savings, you'll see a little bit with the officer that's bumping down to the, the couple day shifts.
So it's about thirty-five thousand, not counting benefits.
Yeah, so I'm thinking, net, net, just salary, straight salary.
And then the savings-
And it'll be a little different, like you said, because the differentials will change. So the higher salaried officers will, their differential will drop, will be lowered because they'll be on a different shift. The new officer will be on the night shift.
At a lower rate.
Correct. But I'd say it's around thirty-five.
Yeah, the differential, I can't think of be that much. Taking one officer down, I mean, not going to take that much away, wouldn't think there's going to be such a major impact there.
To bump the officer that's on the midnight now?
Yeah, you're not going to get a lot back there.
Um, there is a, a little bit, it's, but you're right, not a lot because he's on, he'll be on the top step, the highest pay.
Yeah.
So you take ten percent of his pay, drop him down to two days, there'll be no night differential, so there is a, there is a savings there.
Would you like to?
Yeah, um, the, um, reserves.
Yes.
Could you knock them out completely?
Um, right now, we fill about five hundred, five hundred and fifty reserve shifts a year, which is a lot. It's, it's a lot to manage, it's a lot to, to, for them to be expected to work. With this position, it'll cut it down to maybe like two hundred and fifty, almost two forty-three, almost half. We still need reserves to work the holidays, sick days, when officers are quarter at training. So there still will be a need, but I will be able to maintain what we have and have a smaller group. You know, there's still going to be some that will want full-time and that's, will get it, we don't have a lot of openings here, but it will reduce the need for them significantly. It will be a, a big change.
You know, what I was thinking, if you got rid of, you got rid of the, damn, I didn't realize you were using them to fill in and what have you, so.
Well, one thing we did years ago is we did away with pretty much any type of overtime that's expected for full-timers. We use reserves almost exclusively. So when there is an open shift, a sick day or whatever, we, ninety-nine percent of the time, we're going to fill that with a reserve. So if we didn't have reserves, we'd have to pay the full-time officers overtime, and that would be quite a-
So they're, they're an important position still?
Yeah, they really are. They save a lot of money, and they're a great crew, they're trained, they do a good job. I just, again, it's, most meetings I go to, when the topic comes up that they're talking about doing away with these reserve positions, where they're going to have a Reserve Academy, they're talking, we'll get them all full-time trained, and that'd be more difficult to find somebody to go to a full-time academy and then come work here, you know, one day a week or whatever they're going to do.
You know, I think he's explained it pretty well, it makes sense. The only advantage that they use in reserves on second or third shift is there's no shift differential for them.
Correct, yeah. No, there is, you're right, there's a big savings with reserves, and luckily we have some money in that line item to try to offset this. I just think the, having the full-time dedicated officers, you, you all know them, and you can see what a great job they do. They know the community, they know the people. Again, not taking anything away from our reserves, they do a wonderful job, but we-
Got to go.
Come on, John.
All right, we'll be done in a minute, John. They do a great job, and I just think that the way policing's going, a lot of communities, and I think Ed can attest to this, a lot of the cities don't use reserves on the, the street at all, they're just not allowed because of that, that level of training or their, their commitment. And Groveland's kind of used and abused them for, for a long time, and where they're used as, fill-in and secondary, not primary. There's many, many nights that we have a reserve, fill in the whole department, dispatchers and the officers, and it's just not, it's not the proper policing anymore.
Especially in today's day and age.
Yeah, well, that's, and again, I think we're going to, if we don't continue to keep trying to build up in small steps, we're going to wake up and find that we're, we're not prepared to maintain the level of service that we do today.
We can still balance the budget with Chief Gillen's request? It's not a budget buster as far as I can see?
I've built it in pending your decision, so that I could balance it if you approve it, yes.
But, but there's still, it, it works?
Yes.
With that in?
Yes.
And we're not taking from anybody else to make it work?
Possibly, but it's already done. So in my recommendations, it includes it, so if you vote it, we have a balanced budget.
I didn't see where it really took it away from anything else, except for the reserve line, which-
No, no, I mean other departments.
No, I mean, I didn't, we didn't cut other departments.
I didn't see that either when I reviewed it.
Like I said, if you look, just to help a little bit, I, again, with the expense, I, I kept everything level-funded. I think I put three hundred, and this is all part, I'm willing to, to do whatever as far as tightening things up even more and getting by. We, we got a good crew that is, would be willing to help, and I think everybody supports us over there at the Police Department.
I've only, I only have a five-point-eight-seven percent increase for your overall budget.
Yeah, that's, that was, again, I think because I kept everything so tight and level-funded.
I can't argue against police safety, I mean, I've seen the job you guys have done in the last couple of weeks, you've taken some fentanyl off the streets, huge. You've taken some drunk drivers off the street, huge. We're going to have some more issues, I think, once the recreational marijuana really gets going in the surrounding communities. Right now, it's kind of away from us, but I, I, I think that's going to change soon. So I, I, I can't argue against public safety or, or common sense.
Thank you.
I have another question on, on the budget.
Sure.
Will you with just a three-hundred-and-fifty-dollar increase in fuel? Yeah, and I know that within the last month or so, fuel prices have started to skyrocket pretty good. I don't know what you got left out of the twenty-five, one-fifty that you had with appropriated last fiscal year with about three months to go. How comfortable are you with that kind of, just that kind of an increase?
Not very, to tell you the truth, but-
Oh, that's what I thought.
I, I'm not real comfortable with all of this, like, level-funded, but I'm willing to, to make it work, to, I think it's only fair that we have to give a little bit, even on our side, as, as the police budget.
What do you got left, what do you got left out of the twenty-five, one-fifty?
I'm like, I'm still doing okay, I think I should be like at sixty-two percent, I think I'm at fifty-five percent of that budget, if I have the numbers right.
Oh, that's it?
So, I'm still okay. There's always been a little buffer in that fuel line item just because of what, what you said, the, the way the prices fluctuate, but they are going up now, and I don't know what that would do, but, again, if I had to do a transfer, if I can not, maybe do without something else, I'll, I'm going to watch that with all these line items. Again, the, the work we've done through Finance with this, you look at the line items we have, that was never like that before. There was an, an account called All Other, and all the money was just dumped in, and you could take all kinds of things out of it. This is the most accountable, transparent budget that you're ever going to see, and it's, I think Denise could show it to anybody, even online, it's, it breaks down, I don't know how many I got, but I got a handful of line items that shows where we're spending But thank you for bringing that up. I am, I am a little concerned, but I, I think we'll be okay.
I follow that commodities market quite, quite closely, and I, I think you're going to be okay. I mean, we're projected to be the world's largest exporter of oil by the end of this year, surpassing both Saudi Arabia and Russia. I think the prices increase you're seeing now is somewhat a result of, you have a lot of refineries now shifting over from the winter blend to the summer blend. So I don't know if you're going to have, unless, you know, you can never predict a war or something like that, but I see it pretty steady through the rest of this year anyways, especially demand, global demand for oil is down as far as I can see. China is going through a little lull, so their demand is down. So I don't know if you're going to see the kind of spike that may- So I don't know if you're gonna see the kind of spike that may really.
I'm just hoping, and again, Ed brought up a good point with this, that, um, if I had my way, I would've added the two and a half percent to all those lines. But I don't think that's fair to come in and ask where it's going up in one area. And, um, I think I'll be okay either way. I, you know, just gotta make it work. And, um, and then if it's real tight next year, I won't be asking for any big increases. I'll just ask for where I saw that might've been a deficit in those line items. And again, this is a work in progress. This is only my second budget that I've done, myself. And, um, and again, it's, it's pretty tight. It's a, which, which I think it should be. I think we should be fiscally responsible, and we don't need a lot of extra. There's, there's always been a little extra in that reserve item. There is some, because God forbid, we have an officer, uh, or somebody go out sick, which has happened for months. We've had some serious illnesses, that we have the money to, to handle that, um, replacement, so... And we don't have to come to the town and ask for more money, and, and Denise can attest to this. I, last year, I gave money back. We don't need it. If then it, it wasn't needed, we, I gave money back.
I do recall that, and I think that the fact that you've made this budget yourself shows you, you're gonna take ownership of it. You're, you, you, um, you know you're responsible for it. You helped create it, so that, I think that goes a long way to accountability.
May I just say, so just to answer Ed's question, um, twenty-five, one fifty was budgeted, fourteen thousand, four ninety-seven has been spent through this pay period, through this warrant period. So it's fifty-seven percent.
Yeah.
You have ten, ten grand left there.
Three quarters of the way through the, so you're way ahead. You're way ahead. I don't think you'll have a problem.
You're gonna give money back again.
I, well, I probably will.
From what I see, I don't think you're gonna have a problem.
Yeah.
Well, the townspeople would certainly appreciate that.
Yeah. No, I know they do, and, um, and I, I did it last year, and I, I hope I, I'm pretty much planning on doing it again this year. I don't need it. We don't just waste it, you know, so.
One thing is, you, you've come before us with your budget. You're actually adding a body for safety to the town, which is, you know, we need it. Obviously, the, like I said, the way the world is. Um, you didn't come in here and say, well, you know, the highway got this and that. Nothing to anyone else, you know what I'm saying? You're not, you're not here for that reason. You're here to add safety to the town. You've made your cuts. You've, you've, you've given back. I mean, I don't see a problem with it. I think you've, I think you've done your job. I think you've explained it well, and not just because you're the police chief in front of me either.
Yep.
You've done your job. You've done your job. You've given back. You've made concessions, and, um, you're making the town a safer place. So I don't, I don't see a problem with it.
Thank you.
I think we're all good.
Yeah, I'm confident in your, in your budget and your presentation and stuff.
Kind comments and support. I'm always available if you have a few more questions.
You're my speed dial.
I'll be there. Yep.
When we get out here at midnight, we'll call you.
No, 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 I won't do that. I won't do that. You can call me at midnight, though, believe me. I'm probably up. We're going through some of this stuff.
Yeah, that's a lot.
Uh, so members of the Board of Health have come in. Um, they were asked to be here as well, so they're here now, if you'd like to speak with them.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your, uh, service, and, and remind you folks that, uh, your department, I think they're doing outstanding job. Keep up the good work. And Dwight looks amazing.
Who's waiting?
I haven't seen him. I haven't seen him in the last month.
Okay, board of health. Certainly. You're up.
Okay. We presented this budget to the Finance Committee, and they requested, we requested two extra hours for the Administrative Assistant and the Health Agent. And we based this on the increase in, uh, their services. As everybody's been saying, due to the increase of this town, um, they're, they're doing much more, uh, work than they've done before. And it starts with, um, septic, septic systems have gone from, if I can find it. Here we go. In, um, two sixteen, there were inspected thirteen septic systems and three well installations. In twenty seventeen, there were twenty septic systems and five well installations. And also twenty-two food establishments have to be inspected and licensed. And then, uh, in two eighteen, so far, there's thirty-two done, septic system installations done. And compared to like, um, twenty and thirteen, now already, we're up to thirty-two. So that takes both of the, the Health Agent out to, to view these, witness these septic systems, witness the installations and all this kind of stuff. And the Administrative Assistant has to do all the paperwork for all these, these permits and all these applications. And the Finance Committee also asked us to, uh, let them know how much money we bring in, which we did. And so far, we have, let's see, this is, uh, ending in sixteen, is in this, oh, I'm sorry, two seventeen. We brought in twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars with permit fees and, you know, all this kind of stuff we do.
Could you give me that number again, and the date?
Sure, it is. I think she sent it to, at least the Finance Committee, twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars that we brought in.
And that was fiscal year what?
Ending two, twenty seventeen. And in twos, and in twenty sixteen, it was eighteen, five eighty-eight, like I said. Now it's up to, what did I lose that page? I can't see. It's past my bedtime. Now it's up to twenty-four. Okay, so we got that right. Twenty sixteen was eighteen, five eighty-eight, twenty. Twenty seventeen, it was twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty that we brought in. So that's gone up. I'm, I'm not good at math, so.
I can do the math.
I'm not either.
Do you have a, a, do you have a, a number of fiscal eighteen?
So far, I believe, huh? That's not it?
Fiscal eighteen is a done deal.
So for nine, no, that's nineteen, it's right there, which is what we need.
We need nineteen?
Nineteen.
Oh, we're in nineteen, huh?
We're in nineteen.
Right there.
So far, we got eight thousand, five five nine. That can't be right.
Eight thousand, five five nine?
Yeah.
That's a significant decrease.
I know.
I know.
Because you don't need the hours.
No, stop it.
I'm just regurgitating the numbers. That's a, that's a sixty-six percent decrease.
Right, and then, but this is only posted through till December. Uh, we don't have the current.
You don't have Q one or Q.
Then you're looking at fiscal nineteen. Fiscal eighteen, you took in, um, eighteen thousand, fifty dollars.
Right, but we're looking at fiscal nineteen, and we only have, this only goes from July, uh, two thousand and eighteen to December, two thousand and eighteen. So we still have.
All that, yeah.
Six months.
Another quarter.
So if we were to, if we were to throw that out, another six months, you're right about where you were last year.
Okay.
I mean, if I was to extrapolate, eight, eighty-five, five, times two, I get seventeen.
Okay. Well, we asked for two hours each, and that would be an increase of three percent in our budget. No?
What? That's for, that's.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So it's twelve percent actually total, I think.
No, 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 no. Have you got this, Denise? The, um, the, the one that, uh, she sent to you?
Uh, which what? What are you looking at?
Our budget.
Oh, yeah, your budget. They all have your budget.
This is right here.
I was pulling up your fiscal nineteen to see what your January fees were.
Oh, 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 all right.
Yeah, we have your budget.
Okay. So we had, we only went up to two percent in everything, like you asked. So all we want to do is increase, like I said, the, um, Health Agent and the, um, Administrative Assistant, two hours per week.
So that is an eleven point seven one percent overall budget increase.
Yes, it is. Right here.
Eleven point seven one.
Yep, eleven point seven one percent. And there are many projects coming up that haven't even been done yet. There's a eight, eight unit or eight houses coming up on Center Street.
Center Street.
Center Street. There's, uh, Nichols Village is building a pool and adding more, um, apartments.
Kitchen facility and apartments there.
We all have to inspect that. We all would have to inspect the pool, uh, that this places in Center Street. Aren't they gonna have a pool?
Or the apartments, that's the other, that's the four, the forty B.
The apartments, the forty B apartments.
What apartments?
Excuse me?
What apartments?
That are going up.
I think Sewell Street is what she's referring to.
However, that's, that, you can't fig. Oh, I think I know about that, but you can't fix that, you can't figure that into this budget. That's, that's down the road.
Coming down the line. She's gonna have to inspect their swimming pool, inspect their kitchen, inspect all the, the water stuff.
If, if it ha, if and when it happens.
Which, which project?
Sewell Street.
That's gonna be years.
Years?
Yeah.
I hope it never is.
Well, I mean.
You're right, so, I mean, so.
You're looking at three or four years down the road. That's, that's not next year.
I think the big thing is that the Health Agent had to inspect thirty-two, um, septic systems. Well, no, that was last year.
Oh, last year.
And then she's done, I forgot how many we've already had, that we've listened to variances and, I don't know. I don't know how many we've had already so far this year, but, um, there's a lot of failing systems.
No, mine went, it's a stupid one.
There's, there's a lot of failing systems.
I'm one of them.
So it seems, seems like there's, there's, uh, an increase in the workload of, of both the, the Health Agent and the Administrative Assistant. But you, I think you alluded to the fact that the Administrative Assistant has to do, uh, the paperwork.
For all these new, yeah, these new inspections and issue the permits.
Right, she does now just the permits, where the Health Agent used to do the permits, because just isn't time for her to do them anymore.
So an increase in, in both of their workloads, so, makes sense to me.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with it, 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 two hours, um, and you're staying with a two percent increase that possibly would be given out by the town. So you're asking for two hours, you've proven to me that you're going.
Up.
Up in hours. They're doing the work. That's all I ask for. Um, you've got the stats there and what have you. We, like you say, Groveland's growing. It's growing and, and we're adding more work, load, and for two hours, I think it's, um, it's not a budget buster.
And, and they are bringing in, uh, an increase in, in money.
Right, you're bringing money in.
We are bringing in. Is there a way we can use that money we bring in? No?
No, it's general fund.
Yep.
Nice, nice try, though.
Thank you, thank you.
May I ask you two questions?
Yes.
So the Health Agent, do you know what her hours are in Merrimack? Are we conflicting with that?
She works twenty hours.
Okay.
I didn't know that.
She did. Yes, she does. And she works fifteen here right now.
Okay.
And that position, I guess, a couple of years ago, or I don't know how many years ago, used to be a full-time position.
Yeah, it's way back, 'cause I did check that. Um, and then the, um, clerical, what would the additional two hours be during the week? Do you know?
You mean when she would work it?
So it will be when town halls open, though, right? Because we had an issue in the past that it was at night, so we would make them.
No, 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 no.
Definitely during the day.
I'm all for merit increases if it's in the budget.
Well, so this isn't, this is ours.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is additional hours. It's not a merit increase at all.
I get the hours, and I get that it's, it's an hour increase, which always turns into the budget, and I mean, for qualified increases, if it's in the budget.
It can be accomplished in the budget.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. I, I guess in a perfect world, and theoretically, in my mind, it would work this way, but maybe it doesn't, so maybe you can help me explain it. If the workload increases, we should see an increase in permitting fees, right? So an increase in revenue, right? Uh, but what I'm seeing, what you've told me is, I'm at eighteen, five, and sixteen. I had a spike in seventeen to twenty-four, seven. I came back down in fiscal eighteen to eighteen, eight, less, uh, eighteen oh five oh. And my projected nineteen is only gonna be about eighteen as well. So if there is an increase in work, why am I not seeing a corresponding increase in my revenues?
So, and it, just if I may, so through March, um, you've taken in thirteen thousand, six hundred and ten dollars. That's as of, uh, through Friday.
Three.
Three. So thirteen, six, ten is the up-to-date revenue.
Wouldn't, wouldn't most of those, uh, septic systems be coming in between now and, um, July, so there'll, there'd be quite a, there'd be quite a few more in the fiscal year?
Including her.
I'm still stuck at eighteen, one forty-six, if I extrapolate the thirteen, six, ten. So I'm still stuck at fiscal eighteen revenue numbers.
I don't have the, the fees for what.
They don't, I know.
I don't know what the fee amounts are for when they go out for different.
They're not broken down?
For different things, for the septic systems or for the well installations. There's different fees charged for different things.
Right, but you can understand what I'm saying, right?
Right, I know.
Everybody does, Bill does more work, right?
Mm-hmm.
He, his revenue goes up. If, if I put in more hours and I could pay body out, my revenue goes up. What I'm not seeing here, for what you're saying, an increase in work is a corresponding increase in my revenue. I see it flat. So I, I, I guess I'm having trouble understanding why my work is going up, but my revenue is, is remained flat for the last two years. Am I charging less for my services?
No.
And, uh, am I giving services away? How does that, how is?
A lot of times, um, laws stays longer than she should, as required to say, because she has, uh, uh, work ethics that she can't just leave work and done, so she does it anyway, even though she's only getting paid X amount of dollars for X amount of hours. She puts in more hours.
Okay. But, um...
Quality and pride, and respect.
Yeah, exactly. And, and, and Deb, the, the Inspector, the Health Inspector, who's just beside herself, she's just beside herself, and I can't do it. Did you have to do it? Still, we asked for at least two more.
Well, the fiscal year two thousand and sixteen was the eighteen, five eighty-eight, and then fiscal year two thousand and seventeen was where there was the huge increase of twenty-four, seven twenty.
You had a spike.
And then it went back down in two thousand and eighteen, but.
And if I project out your six, your thirteen, six, ten through nine months, out twelve months, I come out with eighteen, one, four, six, which is just in line where you were last year. And, and sixteen, again, I, I guess, you know, from a business point of view, I expect if my business goes up, I'm gonna generate more revenue. And, and if my business goes up and I'm not generating more revenue, then either two things have gone, right? My costs have gone up, um, not, not necessarily. No, my costs wouldn't have gone up. That would affect my bottom line. So again, my gross is, but why isn't my gross revenues going up then?
I don't, I don't know. I don't, I don't have those fees. I don't know.
Has she deposited all the money? We don't know.
I, I don't know.
Yeah, we don't know.
I don't know. But as of Friday, it's thirteen, six, ten.
So there could be more checks sitting in there. I can go look.
It'd have to be quite a bit.
If someone was, if, to me, if someone was coming in here and asking for ten hours a week, fifteen hours a week, or twenty hours a week, or something like that, I would question it more. It's two hours. And I have been on site with Deb. I know, well, I, I personally know what she's done, and I personally have seen when she's there, trying to do her job. Three or four times, she couldn't do the job, 'cause the phone rang. She was answering the phone. She was doing it. So at the end of it, and, and I'm telling you, I'm sure she knows who I am, but I was honest with her. I said, "Man, you look like you're pretty well stretched out." And she said, "I am. I really am." And she said, "I only get fifteen hours here. I get twenty hours over there." I still can't even really, you know, I could use more hours, both places, but definitely in this town.
And I've heard nothing but.
And I'm not, I, and like I said, I don't know her personally. I, I had the conversation with her. I could see her. I could see her stress. I could see, you know what I mean?
Inspires her work ethics. I've heard nothing but positive installers from, from.
So if, if she's increasing her workload, it's gotta increase the other end, so it's not like we're talking a lot, we're talking two hours. I don't wanna nitpick over two hours. It's just, to me, it's just, it's very minor.
And I'm sure that there's federal and state regulations that they have to keep abreast of, uh, so maybe some. So, maybe some, some schooling that has to go into it.
She does go to seminars.
They probably have to get different certifications than they did a few years back. So, yeah, I, I, I agree with Bill. I, I don't see a problem.
Just two hours.
I have no other questions.
No questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else?
I don't think so.
Mike here.
We're on the board.
Mike? He's always there.
No, I didn't know if he needed to go over anything.
So, it looks like we've interviewed the departments that we want to. Do we want to go this line by line and discuss this?
Whatever you want.
What's that again?
We, we've talked to the departments that have come forward and wanted to talk. Do we now go through the budget?
Do the community classification? Or we don't have to?
We're going to do the warrants tonight, right?
We got to do the warrants tonight.
This can wait until Monday night, though, right?
This could wait till Monday unless somebody has some serious concerns now that they'd want to bring up. But I hate to wait to the last minute Monday and then try to skin this cat. One of my questions is, I look at the library budget. Does this satisfy the requirements? It does.
Yes, it does. So, two things with the library budget. It satisfies the state requirements and because minimum wage is going up again, we adjusted the library assistance because they were going to be too close to the library pages with the adjustment. So, this takes into consideration an increase to their wages and follows state requirements.
Okay. Under debt service, we have a new line, administrative fees?
Yes. Just because we've been covering that elsewhere in the budget, and it really should be with the debt that it's charged to. The, on the spreadsheet that was included, a couple of changes, it's in your, but not in the book itself. Where we had some additional funds from the decrease in the Whittier assessment. I put additional money, Ed brought up a couple of meetings ago, the tree warden, the expense line. So, I increased that to twenty-five thousand to cover more needs with tree removal.
But that's quite a big increase, right, from where we are to where we're going to go?
Yes, so we're at five thousand, and it's been coming out of the highway department. Oh, we've just been putting it off. It's a significant need.
It's woefully inadequate, is what we've been saying.
It really is needed, and the good thing with that, too, is it's only for that line item, only for tree expense. So, if we don't need it, we don't use it, but we really need tree work in town. The snow and ice, I've requested an additional twenty-five thousand to bring that up to two twenty-five, which we increased it last year, but still, even at the two hundred thousand, we're short currently just under fifteen thousand for the year. Hopefully, we don't have any other expenses.
And we had a good winter.
We had a good winter. So, I think bumping that up again, if we don't need it, we don't spend it. But if we need it, it's easier to budget for it if we have the money than trying to cut at the end of the year from other departments. The health insurance numbers I got last week, so I adjusted the health insurance up a little bit more than what I originally put in to account for the rate increases and accounting for people joining during open enrollment. And I think those are the only big changes. If you have questions, you can certainly go over them now, or we can go over them.
It seems to be quite a savings on, on the street lighting, going to the LED lights.
Yes.
I spent thirty-six thousand in, in eighteen, and they're looking to recommendation for twenty-six this year. So, that's, that's a pretty good savings after changing over to the LEDs.
Yes, and that is expected to go down another year from now as well. So, this, so hopefully next year, we'll have the full benefit of that.
Can you tell me with the increase in the computer hardware and maintenance licenses fee?
Yes, so actually, if you look in your budget book, I broke it all down. If you'll recall, we updated all of our infrastructure. With that comes expenses that we never paid for before, license fees, virus protection, cloud storage, disaster recovery. None of those things were done here in the past. They all, even our email now. Email is a per email subscription because it's archived and compliance with the state public records law. None of those things were done before, so this is now the expense of technology.
Well, it's the expense of malware, right?
Yes, we do have cybersecurity, though, now under our.
Right, but we didn't have that before, and we were shut down for a couple of weeks.
We did not. But we do have cybersecurity, a liability insurance now. And that's included at no cost, actually, the cybersecurity.
So, luckily for us, the Whittier assessment went down.
Oh, yeah.
Offset that Penticottet increase.
Yes.
So, did you see the TV? Have you watched TV? They just apply, Whittier just applied through the state for a new building.
Well, the governor was over there the other day giving them a check for half a million dollars, wasn't he?
Yeah, a lot, a lot of vocational schools got grants this year.
And they had, they had to put, I watched it, and they had to put their letter together, letter of recommendation and what have you. And the chairman of the board was saying that the state's on board. They, they didn't say the words, but I think you're going to see that coming down the line.
Well, listen, every time.
And they're talking about a renovation. They're not talking about a new, a new building. They're talking about renovating and bringing the classrooms up to the standard of today's education. So, and they were, you know, I think they're going to be talking some.
Every time I see Senator Tarra, Representative Merrow, they, they run because I'm always asking to find us more money. We haven't asked for money in sixty years. Find us some money.
Hopefully, they pay the whole bill.
Same thing with Essex Tech. So, if you guys will recall, Essex Tech, we don't get a budget. It's based on current fiscal year enrollment, based on October first's number. So, every year, it's a wild card. We have eleven students at Essex Tech, seven of which are graduating. However, we had ten apply for enrollment next year. It's unlikely they will accept all ten, so we do expect savings. But with seven graduating, I think it's safe to cut that slightly.
It's not a left, there's not much more maneuvering in this.
Can we ask about town council funding?
Yep, what about it?
So, it looks like we surprisingly only spent forty-six thousand, right, so far?
Yes, so town council, actually, to date through, I just got the February bill. We've spent thirty-four thousand in total, but a lot of that is not funded through the general fund. We have spent only thirty thousand.
Of that sixty-five?
Of sixty-five through February. So, we will, obviously, March and April's bills are usually higher because of town meeting and them reviewing the warrants. But our bills are, you know, seventeen hundred bucks, nineteen hundred bucks a month. We're significantly down.
But by the, by the end, we won't be crazy numbers.
No, we should still see savings. Last year, we had savings in that line. So, there should still be money unless something major happens that we don't know about.
But there hasn't been, most of the major issues have been cleared up, haven't they?
Yeah, or it's, you know, land issues that comes out of CPA money or things like that.
But I'm saying any pending big issues, most of them have been.
We still have one ongoing ZBA matter that's costing us another twenty, another twenty-two hundred dollars in the month of February.
They have the right to appeal. We have defended.
Unbelievable.
How much money we spent in that case?
Too much.
Yeah, I don't have the most up-to-date. It was.
Sixty, something?
I forget what it was last year.
It was ridiculous what it is.
Yeah, we've spent a bit.
It was basically a year's budget worth of.
We've spent a bit.
Worth of legal costs on one case.
I know, because the auditor's actually just asking me about it, so.
And there's no way to end it?
Not unless we capitulate, and I don't think you want to do that.
No, they were able to file an appeal and some loophole in the law, and so it's still ongoing.
The appeal process is ridiculous.
Yeah, well.
But yes, so we're, we're doing well with the legal expenses. Regarding the fire department, so I put in the high end of the range, so we obviously have it, depending on what is decided. I did not fund the stipend positions, the new stipends that are being requested. I felt that that's something that the new fire chief should decide on, stipends and adding additional staff or positions. So, I did not in my recommendations, but if that's something you. And then a couple of other things, like company reporting and drill wages, I've lowered those a little bit, knowing that we would have a full-time chief in place, so some of those other costs should come down. Again, it's all sort of speculation until a chief is on board, but that's what I'm recommending to you.
Could you, could you explain the, taking out the conservation agent?
You are not taking it out. It's funded through the conservation articles. So, we have articles to transfer money out of their fee account to fund those positions. So, we, we fund the stipend line and the expense line, and her whole position is funded through a warrant article. And the remainder of their expenses are funded through a warrant article.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. The town planner, just so you're aware, why her, what I'm requesting is higher than what she put in. She has submitted a article through CPA for the remaining twenty thousand dollars of her salary, like she did last year. But she's entitled to the two percent on her entire salary. So, she did not build that into her request. So, I did put the two percent on her entire salary in her budgetary line.
Did they back the van out, or they kept the van in for capital improvement?
You guys haven't finalized, you didn't vote on your capital plan yet. I did not put it in there based on the discussions of putting the five thousand in her budget.
The van for COA? I, I thought we, we basically mixed that with the.
Yeah, that was just made to, for maintenance.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that's the way to go. Fifty-eight thousand miles on a, on a truck, that's a baby, you would think. I think that covers most of my questions.
Yep.
The town clerk budget, so in keeping with what we just did with the highway department, I did not increase that salary for two percent on July first, knowing that whoever's elected in May would keep that salary through the fiscal year. I did add additional money in the office expense and supply line, thinking that someone new coming in might need some additional supplies. So, that's why that budget has changed slightly from what was requested as well. Those are the only ones that have changed.
I've got nothing. Any further questions from anyone? All good. And given that this, we're looking at twenty-one eight eighty-three.
Depends. So, if you, if you make all the changes tonight, it will change slightly to sixteen five eighty-six as the, as the remaining.
And that's accepting all changes?
Except water and sewer because they're funded separately. That would, that would approve the change or account for the changes in the council on aging, board of health, and police department.
Anybody have anything further to discuss on that? Should we move on to the warrants?
Well, we need to get to Monday night to get this thing accepted, so we're either going to bite the bullet and talk about if you guys want to make any changes to it, or you want to accept it the way it is, or.
I mean, you can vote Monday, so if there are more changes, if you guys want to think about it.
It, it, I think it, it wouldn't be bad if we let it cook for a little while.
All right, sounds good.
There were some compelling arguments that were made. I'd like to sit back and dwell on them for a minute.
Sure.
It's a little while. So, if we move forward, we will now move on to the two thousand nineteen annual and special town meeting warrant discussion.
And if I may, because I think we can go through this fairly quickly.
Yes, you may, because I know you.
If you're going to make it quick, let's do it.
Well, I, I, I feel for you because I know you're very uncomfortable right now, and I can almost tell I, I'm feeling uncomfortable watching you feel uncomfortable.
Special town meeting warrant, there's only one article, and that's just our transfers. So, most of them are, the fire department is transferring within their budget. Conservation is transferring within their lines. I'm transferring within my department. We do have money left over from Essex Tech this year, so that's really what's funding any deficit that we have. Snow and ice, the cemetery, I, they are looking for, they're in desperate need of a new lawnmower, and I really didn't know if we were going to have the funds in fiscal twenty. So, I told them I would give them additional funds in this fiscal year so that they, I'm sorry, not a lawnmower, a leaf picker-upper. Yeah, it's the leaf picker-upper. So, I told them I would give them additional funds this year so that they could purchase it and have it ready for the fall. So, that's that six thousand. Property and casualty, we're still running that line short. Forward will be more on budget with any sort of adjustments, any, every claim and every deductible's costing us. So, I've increased that a little bit this year to cushion for some of those expenses. But those are fairly self-explanatory. If anyone has any questions on that, otherwise, we can go right to the annual.
You, you indicated that snow and ice was, was underfunded by about fifteen thousand, and you got twenty listed here. So, you, that can be amended to the correct amount.
It can. He wasn't sure if he had any outstanding invoices, so I figured we'll put the twenty. If we don't need it, it'll still be in there at the end of the year. Or we can amend it if we know that, either way.
Snowstorms go later in the year.
Right. But he, you know, where he just started, he wasn't sure if there are outstanding invoices floating around. So, I just thought to be safe, we'll make it twenty. Ready for the annual?
Please, I'll ever be.
Okay. Article one and two are standard chapter ninety articles that are in there every year. Authorizes funding and to accept the chapter ninety funds. This year, the state has granted us two hundred and ten thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Pretty much what it was last year. We're really not getting any more money. So, those are standard. Article three is a standard article for the VFW to assist them with their rent for the year. Article four was requested by Rebecca, our town planner. What this will allow is boards and committees, someone who may have testified that they've watched the meeting and read the notes, then they are allowed to vote on it. We currently don't have this, so if someone's missed a meeting during a hearing, they're not allowed to take part in that. This would just allow the boards and committees to do, have business continue to move forward. Article five, article six were submitted by the board of assessors. Article five would allow us to group personal property taxes that in an annual bill are under a hundred dollars into one bill. Currently, we're sending them bills for like five dollars one quarter and five dollars the next quarter. It's just a waste of postage and paper and time. This will allow us to send them one bill for ten dollars a year.
I can't believe we have to have an article.
You have to have, you have to accept the statute in order to do it. Article six is similar. It's personal property that's valued under five thousand allows us to exempt it. So, if you have a personal property of twelve hundred dollars, we don't have to waste time spending bills. It's just not monetary enough to send a bill for that purpose. Article seven is something that this board has asked me to put in there to change the position of town clerk from elected to appointed, provided that such change would be approved by the voters at the two thousand twenty annual town election. So, if this passes town meeting, it goes on the ballot in two thousand twenty for a decision to be made. Article eight is the roadway acceptance that you just voted tonight on Sunset Circle. So, this would ask town meeting to accept the roadway. Article nine is to place the conservation restriction on the eight acres of land that are required for the community trail that we've discussed on Strawberry Fields property. Article ten is to amend the Penticottet Regional School District regional agreement. We've discussed this and the changes. The changes are highlighted in gray and underlined. There's not many, but it allows for a contingency plan for the school to put in in case of an emergency, and it allows for reviewing the agreement on an annual basis. It takes out some language that we don't follow anymore. It takes out some language that we don't follow anymore, and that's pretty easy. The next article is Article 11, which is something also this board has asked for. This would allow electronic voting to take place at town meeting. So if this passes, it gives the option of adding electronic voting technology at town meeting. This is a bylaw.
Just to add the option to it, not to fund it.
Correct, correct, just to add the option to it. Yes, yes, and I did talk to, I have talked to a couple of the communities, and some have bought them outright and said that it's much cheaper to just buy it and pay a month, an annual maintenance. Most communities rent them on an annual basis. So it really depends, but it's really not worth appropriating money until we know if town meeting's going to go along with it. So we'll put the article in, just amends our bylaws to show how people can vote at town meeting, and that's one of them. Article 12 is a request that you'll remember. Debbie Webster once again is asking the board to approve her request to require town meeting to approve all sewer extensions. If you'll remember, in the special town meeting, it was tabled after some contentious discussion. She is asking the board to support her request and put the article in again. Article 13 is a requirement under our MS-4 stormwater management permit. It is for municipal discharges into the town drain system. So it sort of goes through and talks about the illicit discharges and what can be in and what can't be in, one of which is something that we've had an issue with this last year. It talks about no discharging into a public way if it's creating a health hazard or a risk. So that was something that we had no way to enforce last year, because we didn't have a bylaw identifying that you could not pump water into the street and create an ice dam or things like that. This actually was required to be in our bylaws as of 2008, and it has never been done by the town, so...
Is that a common sense thing, Bill?
It is, but people do it, and we had no way to, we sent the police out, but they couldn't do anything about it, so...
This will also eliminate people plowing, they're driving in the middle of the street.
No, I mean, so this is, no. This is really what's hitting our public drainage system. So the stormwater management system, you know, people can't pour oil down there. It's more to protect the public waterway and under the EPA standards of the stormwater management permit. So the illicit discharge more is because we don't know what's coming out of people's basements. It might not necessarily be groundwater. It might be mixed with oil or contaminants in their basement, so they can't pump out into the public roadway, because then it's going in the stormwater system. The snow, we could certainly look at, but that's not included in this. I'm going to skip the next few, because we're going to come back to Mike in a minute about those. These are the CPA articles. So I'm going to jump ahead to, Article 22 is the capital improvement article. I only placed in the replacement of a line cruiser. I did not put the COA van in there. This will be funded through free cash, so it's not a debt authorization, it's a free cash request. Article 23 is the infamous Pennsyltucket Regional School District construction project. I know the request was made not to put it at the end of the night. I'll be honest with you, people are going to get up and walk out, and we're going to have a problem with the quorum like we did with the senior center article. So I really went back and forth, but I know...
Can we lock the doors?
I know, Bill, you were sort of supporting making it more family-friendly.
Well, I don't want to see it at the beginning, because I know exactly what will happen. If it's the first article, you'll get a vote, and then everybody will walk out, and you won't get anything done. We don't want it at the end, because then I'm afraid you won't have enough voters there to vote on it. Somewhere in the middle probably is the, one of the best places. Can it be moved forward ahead of CPA stuff?
Well, so the way I restructured the warrant last year, this technically falls under capital. So I put it with the capital article. I mean, I certainly could rearrange all the capital if you wanted. But I kept the same structure that we created last year and just put it with the capital article.
If it means, if it means a lot to people, they're going to stay. I mean, if it's dear to their heart, they're going to stay. If they don't want to vote for it, they're going to stay. If they want to vote for it, they're going to stay. I think any article that's dear to someone's heart, they're going to ride the storm.
Yeah, it's not that, it's what happens afterwards.
Yeah, it's not that. It's what's been relayed to me is a lot of young families with young children that, you know, the earlier...
Right, but on that point...
It's the same point, then they leave, and then we don't get anything done.
Right, because on that point, they're only going there to vote on that one article. They're not going there to conduct town business.
Right, and they're going to walk, they're going to do their business.
So this is pretty much smack in the middle of the warrant. We have about 40 articles, so...
It's almost like in the old days when we used to have certain articles come up and you'd have a...
So as long as we still have a quorum to conduct the rest of the night, then we're good. If not, then we'll have a problem.
Put all the boring stuff first, get it out of the way.
So I mean, we can certainly think about that if we want to rearrange it, but right now, that's where I have it, is Article 23.
I see 41 total articles, is that right?
Yeah, and the last one's the election, so it's really 40.
I mean, I don't think it's a big deal to stay on that, we do it all the time.
Believe me. If we get anybody out, they wouldn't avoid us.
Make 22 cents an hour.
At the rate I charge.
Article 24 is the money we receive from the light department every year. Articles 25 and 26 are the conservation transfers from the fees account. 25 is for the salary account, 26 is for their expense account. Article 27 is our standard revolving accounts with the addition of, I added the pines maintenance, which we voted last year. I did increase some of the spending limits. Conservation requested to increase VZ, I increased the rest of them. Again, it's nothing, we can only spend what we have money for, so there's nothing wrong with having it. Just figured, especially with the pines, I don't know what we're going to spend on signs and things like that, so it gives us some buffer. If we collect the money, then we can spend it. Article 28 is a citizen's petition to replace the sign at the library for $1,700. Article 29 is...
Why is the town being asked to pay for that?
It's a citizen's petition, that's what they're requesting. They're requesting that we come up with $1,700 to replace the sign.
Now, since they've kind of sought a light with their investment strategy, can you tell us how much interest that count has generated since they got away from making 82 cents a month?
I can tell you this fiscal year, because I have it right here.
That's good enough for now.
So through January, they have made $1,442.
This year?
Yes.
768 years' worth of stuff with the old rate.
Yes, so that's seven months' worth of interest.
Couple more months, they've got the money for the sign.
They wouldn't have had before.
Article 29 is to take $50,000 from our overlay surplus account. That's something that we've used to balance the budget over the last few years. It's been much higher, over $100,000. Hopefully, we can keep it at this amount and then not need it in the future. Article 30 is to take $85,000 from free cash to fund the budget, but it's really to fund the OPEB appropriation that's within the budget. Yep.
Should we, I noticed that was something in here. The, I guess the county retirement contribution jumped quite a bit.
Yep. Jumped, and then it came down slightly.
Yes, that's retiring, that's folks that are retiring from our system that are now collecting pensions.
Yes. That's the pay-as-you-go, we pay for the annual retirements, yes.
And what's our current OPEB liability?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Tough to generate that number.
Yeah, it's, I want to say we were around like 1.8 million at our last actuary.
So if we could throw some extra money at that, so our kids wouldn't have to pay our debts, maybe that wouldn't be a bad idea.
Perhaps.
If we have it.
Perhaps.
Article 31 is putting $75,000 into stabilization from free cash. Article 32 is putting $50,000 into the capital stabilization from free cash. Article 33 is to fund the next year of the MS-4 stormwater permit, that's for $60,000. This is year two of our five-year program. Article 34 is to put $25,000 from fiscal 2018 free cash into the personnel buyback account. This is the account that when people retire and they get their sick buyback, we have an account for it. We haven't replenished it, at least since I've been here, and the last retirements have really taken a chunk out of it. We have a lot of retirements, I'd say, in the next few years. So where we had some extra money, I thought it was prudent to put some in there so that we're not caught off guard when people start retiring.
Do we have a number, do we know what our liability is on that?
I don't, I might, oh, I don't know if I have it on this computer. I do, because I file it every year with the auditors. I just don't think I have it on this one.
Now, you can toss that out to us in an email later.
Yep. Article 35 is to take $10,000 from free cash to purchase two new voting machines. Talking with the town clerk, the existing voting machines will no longer be supported as of 2020. She provided me with a quote, and the quote is like $9,800. So the $10,000 should purchase two new machines that will be able to be supported after 2020.
What's the longevity of those machines?
I don't know.
I think our original machines have been around quite a while.
They've been around a while, and I don't know why 2020 is the year that they're not going to be supported any longer. So I'm not sure if they expire, I don't know if their date, I really don't know what makes them expire. But the company that maintains them will no longer maintain them.
Imagine some like Microsoft where, you know, they stopped supporting XP.
Right, they send, they send like the chips out for the election, so it may be something with just the technology is changing. Article 36 is to take $55,000 from free cash and make capital upgrades at the Bagnell School. I've been in contact with Greg Haddon, and there is additional rooms that need to have asbestos removal, and they have some additional upgrades, the sidewalk or the handicap ramp needs to be repaired. There's a few things. So what I told him is that I'm putting this request in, and then I think we could probably take another $20,000 from the summer program to continue to do some work there, and that will give them a good chunk to do the asbestos removal and do some repairs. So I do think we need to start doing more repairs at Bagnell that are of a capital expense.
So that's our responsibility, it's not under their lease agreement?
No, the building is our responsibility. And we have not been taking responsibility for a lot of the stuff there, so I think if we can do...
Well, there was a time when we weren't sure what domain it fell into.
Right, but I think if we can start doing something on an annual basis, that we can get some of these things taken care of. If we have the money, I think it's important to take care of.
Do we have enough money set aside for outside maintenance as well?
Yep, that's all a separate account, that's all separate. So that's under our fields and our summer program. Article 37 and 38 is the water and sewer accounts, they're articles. So 37 is their water account and their water request, and Article 38 is their sewer request. Article 39 is the, would be the budget, and then Article 40 is to just vote on the salaries. So then Article 41 is the election. So if there are no questions on that, I'll turn it over to Mike to go over the CPA articles, unless you have questions on anything I just went over quickly. I mean, they're fairly...
The district offered any help for the pines for us? Because my understanding is they're going to use the pines for their varsity games as opposed to the high school field, which they're no longer going to use. Did they offer any assistance in mowing the lawns, fertilize, any kind of gratuitous...
No, they offered us nothing.
Okay, you don't have a problem with me asking, right?
No, not at all.
I think that's only fair.
So now, I would agree with that, Bill. So now Articles 14 on is what Mike will talk about with the CPA request.
Mike Dempsey for Community Preservation Committee. And so what I handed out to you is just a summary sheet on the community preservation proposals that CPC has approved and recommend that you bring to town meeting. And if you look at this, there's seven of them. Originally, the request was for $448,710, doing some changes to the article, changes to the proposal, and primarily cutting back on the pines field request. We brought that down to $344,000 for the total seven articles. Just a couple of notes on here before I go quickly through each one. Our total revenue collection for fiscal year '18 was $437,491, and so we're only proposing to spend $344,000 of it. So the committee is, unless there's a year where we have a very unusual project, we're trying to keep the expenditures in line with what's taken in or less. Because one of the reasons being is our matches have gone down, obviously, because the state is matching less. And I don't have the exact percentage, but it was, the match in fiscal year '18 was approximately 50%. And we did pretty good. We were among the 13 or 14 highest towns in the state receiving that much match, because we have something about our demographics, they like Groveland, and also because we have a 3% CPA, CPA revenue collection there. So we make out pretty good. So this year, our total, like I say, is $344,000. So the first project is, Denise already mentioned it. We are, got a request to fund $20,000 of the town planner's salary to put towards about a little, about a third of her time will be spent working on an implementation plan for spending our community affordable housing money that's in CPA and money that's collected under the affordable housing bylaw. So we have a lot of money sitting there, like you can see here. CPA, we have $682,000 and change sitting there in community housing that we can only spend on community housing, can't be spent on anything else that we've collected over the years that we've had CPA. So we really need to pay attention to how, how will we spend that that positively affects our town residents and help them, those who need help with more affordable housing options. So she's going to be working on that. So that's the first article, that's for $20,000, similar to the one that we passed last year for her to work on the open space and recreation plan. The next one is $26,000 to cover the compliance with the Americans for Disability Act at VZ Park. This was submitted by Conservation. The reason for it is, is as you probably know, VZ Park is not completely, it's an old building. It's not completely accessible. So a study was done using an outfit that does this kind of thing, and they came up with a list of work. So 90% of that work can be done with this $26,000. There's a lot of small things. The largest thing that this does not address is an elevator in the building somewhere and a ramp to have another access to the building. We are not planning on coming back for that under CPA. We're hoping... We're hoping to get a state grant, because there are state grants for that kind of thing. So, this is going to cover us, though, for ninety percent and will cover us for any, to show that we're making a good faith effort in making the building handicapped accessible. The next article is twenty-three thousand dollars for the purpose of painting Washington Hall. I think it hasn't been painted in about ten years now. That doesn't sound right, but it's been a while since the building's been painted, and it's, especially the trim is really starting to show its age. So, building needs to be taken care of. And that comes under the historic section of CPA. The fourth article is seventy thousand dollars. This is the, put forth by the Recreation Committee to cover some more improvements in the pines. This was the one that they had added in taking water out of the Merrimack River for the irrigation system. After we reviewed what they wanted to do and also a submission by selectmen Dunn, we came to an agreement with the Recreation Committee that the best thing to do would be to go forward with the plan that Bill had presented. So, that's going forward, because we already have the money from a previous CPA project to do that. So, this seventy thousand dollars is primarily going to cover hydro seeding, the new fields, a replacement roof on the pavilion, and some guardrails in the pines to keep it safe for people driving around there. The fifth article is for twenty thousand dollars, and this is, actually, this is, it's a total of thirty thousand dollars. Sorry, it's from two different accounts. This is submitted by Conservation, and it's to do a trail project along with the Bagnell School. So, the Bagnell School has worked with Conservation for the last twelve years or so to maintain and preserve many of our trails at VZ Park, Meadow Pond, Center Street, Greenway, and the town forest. And so, this project is going to enable us to do some mini projects at those larger facilities plus develop some of the trails that are in some of the smaller properties spread throughout the town that we really haven't been able to address. The good thing about this one is the thirty thousand dollars, we hope to get matched by another thirty thousand dollars from some other private organizations that grant trail funds. So, that'll be good, we can leverage that money.
Mike?
Yes.
Is, just eighteen, is that the one that where the kids work on these projects? They do woodworking and stuff like that and different things in the Bagnell?
Yes, fourth grades.
Fourth grade?
Yeah, it's amazing, fourth graders, but they do a pretty good job.
They do an amazing job.
Yes.
And I want to bring up something that concerned me when I, when my youngest was there. They do a lot of the stuff without a lot of safety equipment. No safety glasses.
Yes.
And I, that was a big concern of mine. I actually went my own money and bought two cases of safety glasses for the kids. Is there money in here to, so these kids don't get hurt mistakenly, accidentally? You know, get them safety glasses, air protection, you're going to use some loud power tools? I know they can get into some pretty nice projects.
Well, primarily, parents do the heavy, real heavy lifting on some of these projects, but you're absolutely correct. And so, yes, because this money can, is really, can, has to be spent on physical things that they're using to do the trail work. So, certainly, safety equipment can be in that.
Great.
I'll make a note to-
Yeah, could you make that a priority? I hate to see any kid get hurt needlessly.
Add that in, yes. It's a good point. We've been fortunate, no one has got hurt in all the years that they've been doing it, but, you know, it only takes one accident to change that.
To ruin the whole thing, and then, you know, it's not worth it to see anybody get hurt, especially at that age.
Exactly, exactly.
Appreciate it, Mike.
Sure. The next article six is for a hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars. This was put in for, from the Recreation Committee again. This is for a new playground at the Pines Recreation Area, completely taking the old playground out, the surface that's there, and replacing it. New surface, new swing sets, and other climbing equipment for, one for ages two to five and the other one for ages five to twelve. Not unlike the one that was put in at Washington Park a few years ago with CPA money.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yes.
So, I've been asked by several people if that's going to be, if you know if that's going to be an ADA compliant playground.
We brought this up at the last Community Preservation Committee meeting that we had, and we added some money in that the Recreation Committee wanted to make some of it ADA compliant. After that, it was brought up by someone else to me that it may not have been enough. So, I have a request back into the Rec Committee to answer that question. So, I don't know, but, you know, that, that is a potential issue that I think we have to deal with.
Okay.
The other thing is, is when they purchase the equipment through the company, once you get a budget, you know, you got a budget number, there's different units that are ADA compliant. They may have to change the unit that they're talking about-
Yes.
-to another style unit, but they are different units you can pick from.
Yes, yes.
And fit that to a remote.
Right, exactly.
Then, the land around it would be whoever, whoever puts it together with, you know, wood chips or whatever, that would be on to the volunteers, however you go about it.
Right, right.
The company will help them-
Yes.
-talk about the ADA part of it.
Yes, and, you know, I don't know if you were there, Bill, when we were talking about this, but the other thing is that this playground is more expensive than the one we put in in Washington Park, and the reason being is that now the companies want you to hire them primarily to put the thing together versus volunteers. And again, it's liability reasons, you know, so, so that's unfortunately, it's more expensive. But on the good side, we'll have more input from the, from the people putting it together to make sure that it's done right. And the, the last one, again, is from Conservation. This is to potentially purchase a three-and-a-half acre parcel that is right next to VZ Park, that is available due to a reduction in the number of houses that are being built on that lot. And it's the reason why Conservation is interested in it. Besides it being right next to VZ Park and offering us a buffer there between the new houses and the park is that it will allow us to connect to three other conservation properties along the pond that we currently are kind of isolated, be able to connect them all to the VZ Park property. And that one's for twenty thousand dollars. So, I'll take any questions you have on any of these.
I guess I'll start. My biggest issue with buying any more town land is frogs and turtles. Can someone, is it possible to get me a, a notified statement saying that for the rest of eternity, I will never have to deal with a frog or a turtle on this land? I mean, because it is so, so frustrating, Mike. I got to be honest with you, and I think most of the people share my sentiments. When we spend money, good, hard-earned money, and then we find out we can't use some of it because of a turtle or a frog. It's just so frustrating.
But what can't be used?
Well, we just spent three-point-seven million dollars on this property called Strawberry Fields, and I understand if I'm understanding correctly-
That had nothing to do with Conservation. Nothing to do with Conservation.
It had everything to do with, we spent a lot of money, and there's some of the land we cannot use now, is that right?
That, that property, if I'll remind you, sorry to interrupt, but that property primarily was purchased to protect our water supply, you know?
Right, not the turtles and the frogs, our water.
No, it had nothing to do with that, and it had nothing to do with Conservation. It's under your control. The selectmen decided it was important enough to put that kind of money towards it. So, that's, so, take that one off the table, because it really doesn't apply to what you're saying. But, so, what I want to know is what we can't use because of turtles or any other animals?
Well, I'm- Well, there was sections around the firing range, and then sections around the rail trail proposal area that you came to us last summer, I remember, that said that there was several acres that we were not allowed to use now because of the turtles.
That's because of the trail project, yes.
Yeah, that doesn't mean we can't use them.
You just gave us a list, or someone gave us a list saying of all the things we can't do. And I, and I remember this, because I said the only thing we can't do is walk barefoot on there.
No, what you're talking about is the Conservation restriction, the Conservation restriction that are, that are required on all of those properties that either we get state money for, which is primarily where they exist. Meadow Pond, VZ Park, parts of Center Street. They all, they all have Conservation restrictions on them, because the state requires it, because we bought those with state funds. Now, again, yes, there are restrictions on those, but they're, they're not, they don't say you can't do anything on those properties, and there's plenty of people that are using those properties as they are meant to be used. So, you know, I would have to respectfully disagree with you on that issue. And I also firmly believe that the people support what we've done with all these properties, because they, they had to pass a vote. We didn't, you know, nobody decided that we're going to buy these things and put a Conservation restriction on them in a vacuum. They had to pass a town vote, they had, and some of them had to pass townwide votes, too, not just town meeting votes.
Agreed, and in the, in the sense of full transparency, are there any frogs or turtles on this land currently? I want to know what I'm buying, basically.
Well, any place that's next to a pond, yes, it probably is.
Probably has a frog or a turtle.
And I think that's what you're getting at, is a surprise later that we're like, oh, look what we found, we can't use it.
But, but the difference is that this is being purchased for Conservation purposes versus purchasing something for non-Conser-, I mean, it's already going to be under the Conservation umbrella. So, we shouldn't have to mitigate anything, because we're not going to build on Conservation land.
Right, right. The issue that they're talking about Center Street more than anything else.
Right, but if, my question to you, Mike, is-
Yes.
And I've kind of followed this a little bit. This property is the property that is up off of Salem Street.
Yes.
And from what I watched and from what I heard, it's more of a land swap type from the builder, more or less, to you guys to get into, to get in. I know he's giving some land back or whatever. I've always said, and I haven't really got deep into this, but I've always said, are we getting into a slippery slope with making deals with developers to gain land for VC or whatever? That's my whole thing. Twenty thousands is peanuts, but the point is-
Peanuts in my world.
Sometimes I, sometimes I wonder if people close their eyes to make deals, and, and that's all, you know?
Yeah, no, I, I don't believe so. You know, the case with this, if you look on the map, this was a big ten-acre parcel. And it was purchased by a developer. He came in and, before the planning board had, one, two, three, was going to build, okay, I think he was going to build five houses there. One's already built, but he was going to build four more. The, the fourth one that he was going to buy was in a very questionable area. The neighbors were very upset. It's over there by where that number says seven-thirty-three, it was in that area there. And so, the planning board said, look, you know, talk to Conservation, because the neighbors here are very unhappy with you building another house there. Is there another way you can do it and, and at least not get into the land that's right behind all those houses on Washington Street where the people were unhappy? We met with the developer, and we looked at, made sure he understood where the wetlands actually were there and those, those blue areas that are right near the number seven-thirty-three also. So, it was delineated, and then the developer decided to go with planning board's recommendation to move the house configuration around and not have to build one more house over there in the questionable area where they wanted to do it. Made the neighbors very happy. So, it didn't really have much to do with Conservation or really planning. Planning did their job. Planning, you know, is trying to get people to build developments that make sense rather than just spread things out and use as much land as possible. So, fortunately for us, that freed up this chunk next to, to VZ Park, which gives us access around the pond, like I say, to the other properties that we already own. I understand what you're saying, though, Bill, certainly, that's a concern. But I don't think it was the case in, in this, this instance.
Maybe, am I looking at, I don't know, maybe I'm looking at this wrong. Washington Street with that cul-de-sac road, is that, we're talking about one-forty-six and one-fifty-two?
Yes.
So, one-forty-six and one-fifty-two, it has a, am I correct when I say this? Is that a, a road with a, with a, like a turnaround in there?
Well, it was, they were going to build a road in there.
Yeah.
But you see, they would have been within buffer zone, so it was going to be-
They would have been into that wetlands area, so they couldn't do it.
Yeah, it was going to be difficult for them to do, but they were going to put a house right up in there, you know?
So, what happened is they pulled the road out of there.
Yes.
Reconfigured their project, more or less, and then you guys got the land, they got to reconfigure, downsize there from five to four-
Yeah.
-or whatever.
Right.
And that's where I'm stuck on the point that we get into, and I understand when, instead of having a five-lot subdivision, we have a four lot. But, you know, sometimes it appears like there's deals being made, you know?
Oh.
I, I mean, I guess it's part of developing land, you know, I guess that's part of it, you know?
But, see, it's not done, there is that separation, because planning doesn't care about, they, they don't care about the same things we do.
Right, you have two different boards.
And we're not telling the builder what he can and can't do. We can only say where things can be built.
Right.
You know, so, I know what you're saying. Like I say, it's a fine line, I think we always have to be careful about it.
Right, right.
So, a quick question, Mike.
Yes.
To see if the town will acquire a, authorize the selectmen to acquire from S A J Realty Trust by gift?
Yes, so, you know, this gives us the option of acquiring it either by gift, by purchasing it, or any other means that they want to-
I'm all for acquiring it by gift.
So am I. So am I. Could happen.
So, if they're gonna, if they're gonna...
Where'd the gift come from?
Come from Santa Claus, I don't care.
Nice.
Um, but if we're gonna acquire it by gift, why are we, why, why would we offer twenty thousand dollars?
They haven't offered that yet.
And they probably won't if they see the articles.
Gift is just one of the options.
They probably won't.
Believe me, this is...
We'll take the twenty thousand.
This is not very much money, unfortunately, for that, for land, and so, you know, unfortunately, we have to do this in the open.
Right.
You know, negotiate, and yes, they're gonna know that we're voting, you know, seventeen thousand five hundred towards purchasing that three and a half acres, five thousand dollars per acre. Uh, so, they know that, doesn't, we can't prevent that from happening, but, you know, uh, frankly, when I last spoke to them, they wanted a lot more money than this, but I said, we can't go higher than that 'cause it doesn't appraise for that much money.
What can they do with the land if we don't buy it?
Well, they could, I don't know, they could go back and decide to build that house there, I guess.
Building on top of a frog and turtle?
If I was a developer, there's no way I would give up a lot of land and not build a house. If I was able to build a house, I would put the house there and build it.
Maybe...
Any idea, Mike, what we're getting for taxes on that, on that property right now?
Uh, yes, well, the three and a half acres, um, it, it was like a hundred and thirty-eight dollars a year, something like that. It's, it's not very much because it's open space. So, this is, Bill, this is one of those things that, we're gonna put this, if, if this goes forward in town hall, believe me, you, you know what I'm up against when I'm up there talking about buying anything.
The whole town.
I have to, I have to convince people that this is worth doing.
I'm convinced you're paying people, is what I mean.
They buy and vote. You have to convince people that you're buying the right thing with money they've already paid.
Yes, right. I mean, that we're, you know, convinced that this is the right thing to do, it's to their benefit, um, you know, the, they're gonna benefit by us owning it versus it versus not, those kind of things. So, really, the burden, the burden is on conservation to, to prove that to the people, and usually, usually, we've been able to do that. But, you know, I, I don't know, I, I can't guarantee, you know, maybe people are, feel some of the same questions that you've brought up, I don't know.
It seems to me if he could build a house there, he'd make more than...
Well, you would, but see, there's, there's development costs, there's, there's, uh, permit costs, you know, just, just to, if, if you're gonna build a house like that close to the wetlands, you have to go through, the permitting is expensive, so by the time you...
And the house has to be a hundred feet from wetlands or two hundred, whatever the setback might be.
Right, so by the time you go through that, you start to say, is it really worth it? You know, it's gonna cost us thirty thousand dollars to hire a consultant to get us this permit, you know?
So, it almost sounds like we're bailing this S A J Realty Trust out from trying to build on land that really isn't suitable to be built on. Why would we wanna do that?
Well, I don't know if you could really say that's the case, but, um, you know, it's more looking at it like, um, because he decides to do it this way, and he wants to then not use that land, then we're interested in, in, in adding it to VZ Park, we can't pay that much, we really can't pay what it's worth, but we're willing to pay something for it, or if he wants to choose to give it to us, we're willing to accept that, too.
My, my point, Mike, and hear me out, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to drill you, but my point that I'm trying to make, and it just, if you sat outside the pitch-up...
Yes.
It's almost like they make deals to get a deal, and that's just me, that's just me, how I look at it, and I'm not at the meetings like you, and I'm not putting as much time in, but it almost looks to me like, wow, this development's gonna go through faster, it's gonna go through quicker, let's give a piece to conservation, let's narrow it up a little bit, let's get away from the wetlands, and planning board pushes it through, conservation pushes it through, and we got a done deal.
Yeah.
And that's just how it appears, and I'm just saying...
But it's not that, it's not that way at all. I mean, nobody, it's not like we're sitting in a back room negotiating.
No, 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 no.
You know what I mean?
No, it's, it's, it's the, it's the quicker and cleaner way to get my development done, and it's all above board.
Yeah.
It's all above board.
Well, yeah.
But they know where to go to make the deal. That's all I'm saying. And maybe I'm wrong when I say that, and I'm not, I'm not crucifying you, it's just how I look at it, not speaking of anyone but me, that's how I see it. And, I mean, maybe I'm totally talking out of bounds, but...
No, no.
And I saw it up on Wood Street. I mean, I, I didn't, I thought that whole, the whole thing up on Wood Street, I, you know, the town got a forest what was worth nothing, and we gave a little teeny piece of land, I get it, I mean, that's fine, but I said it then, and I'm gonna say it again, we're on a slippery slope doing these kind of deals, that's just, that's just how I see it. Someday, something's gonna come down the road, and they're gonna say, what's going on here? What happened here? You know, what did conservation do, or what, what, what really took place?
Yeah, but that, that would be if indeed we were doing that, but we're not. Nobody's doing that.
Right.
You know, that, that might be how it looks.
Right, but I'm just trying to explain...
Well, no, I appreciate it. I don't want it to look like we're doing something illegal, but we're not.
Right, you might not be, but it's, whether it's you are or you're not, the perception is that it might be, so that is what the reality is.
Yeah, but, so if somebody thought that, and they looked into it, and they looked at all the minutes of the meeting...
Well, now you're asking people to make an effort to do something.
There's no, there's nothing going on. You know, there's, I can tell you, there's nothing, no planning, nothing going on that that happens.
Mike, you were looking at that map.
Yes.
Seven thirty-three.
Yes.
Uh, how come you didn't keep on going and take in all of that wetland area?
Well, because, you know, it, it then, um, they're building a house that requires so much acreage, and, and they'll count, they can count part of that wetlands as their acreage that's required, so they need, like, an acre there to build the, the house that they're gonna build, so it requires where that wetlands is to be part of the acreage.
Are they gonna use that area on Washington Street between, uh, the one fifty-seven and one forty-nine at the entrance?
No, no, they're not gonna, they were gonna put a road there, they're not gonna put a road there, no.
Yes, certainly.
Mike, can you clarify for me the criteria for community housing and that bucket of money that's there?
Okay. How it can be spent?
What that it would be applied to? What situation?
What it could be applied to?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yes, so, um, that can be spent on many different things having to do with uh, community or affordable housing, so I'll give you some examples. Um, we could, uh, use it to, um, buy a piece of land, and then we could have a developer build, uh, affordable housing on it.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, it would go to, you know, go towards meeting the ten percent goal, ideally, that's what we're looking to try to do. Um, we could use it to develop a program to buy down mortgages for people who couldn't afford it within the certain requirements of, uh, where you meet, so...
Requirements from who, HUD?
The state, the state sets those guidelines. So, um, um, people would be able to buy a house because, uh, we would buy down the mortgage rate or, you know, buy down the down payment or something to make it more affordable.
So, with that, that piece, has that ever been applied?
Oh, yeah.
It has, okay.
Not in Groveland.
Well, I mean, I don't care if it happens in Andover, I mean, come on.
I, I wanna make sure...
Was the Groveland doors if it happened in downtown Chicago?
Well, it happened in Peoria, Andover, I mean...
No, I'm saying, we, we've never done it, but other towns have, yes.
Other towns, so it's never been applied in Groveland, that was my question.
It could be, yeah.
It could be, but it hasn't been.
Oh, yeah, no, it hasn't.
So, back to the buying or being able to put up affordable housing, or the community housing towards that ten percent goal for, um, forty B or whatever it is, right?
Yes, right, right.
That is actually something I like to hear, because...
Yes.
Bill, Don, and I have been working with Senator Tar on possibly trying to get a project like that going.
Right.
So, we could use some of that fund?
Oh, absolutely.
And what does the process look like for that to be approved and requested?
You just put a plan together, and then we present it to the Community Preservation Committee, and then Community Preservation Committee approves it, then it gets on the town meeting warrant, and it gets approved.
Okay.
So, Mike, saying that...
Yes.
Um, can any of that money be used for upstart fees? Now, without going into it too deeply, but there could be some situations we need to clean up ahead of time. Can we use that money, even though we're earmarking it for this project, but we need a cleanup?
Oh, you mean like, uh, Brownfield site or something?
Yeah, something like that. We need a cleanup stuff.
Probably, probably. You know, these are the things that, um, that twenty thousand dollars that we're gonna spend on the town planner, she's gonna come up with, so you...
Right.
You know, you definitely wanna work with her.
Right.
Um, she, she's got a lot of ideas about what can be, what has been done in other towns and what we could do.
But if we haven't, if we haven't met, meet our housing quota yet, not ten percent, why wouldn't we use this money to try, and I know you have enough on your plate, but why wouldn't we use some of this money to help us get to there?
Well, we could, but the trouble is, who's gonna do it?
Right.
You know, we used to have an Affordable Housing Committee, that don't exist anymore, so it's like, who's, where does, whose responsibility is this? It's kinda nobody's responsibility right now, so it kinda falls on, on your plate 'cause no one else is doing it. But, you know, I, I'd recommend that we get an Affordable Housing Committee back in place because you can at least work with them to let them do all the heavy lifting, and you don't have to do it.
Can, Mike, can that money, the community housing money, can that be used for infrastructure?
Yes. Again, it, it depends, you know what I mean? It has to relate back to, um, you know, housing, directly to housing.
Like sewer lines?
But, but there's a lot of things that cover, come under that.
Well, I'll give you an example, I'll, I'll give you an example. Uh, if you have an area where you wanna do affordable housing, would be town-owned property.
Yes.
Uh, is, is infrastructure, I'm talking about running, running pipes up there, drainage pipes, water pipes, sewer pipes, uh, the hot top end of the road.
Yeah.
Uh, is, is that, can that, that be used for that?
I think so. I, I don't see why not. Again, um, if you had a site that you could show that you're gonna build affordable housing there, and it required, uh, cleanup of the site, you needed to bring sewer and water there, all with the plan that you're gonna...
Of the housing at the end of the day.
Yes, yeah, then I'd say, yes, you probably could.
It has to be tied to the housing.
Yes, you know, and obviously, there's not enough money to be building something.
Right.
But if the town has a site that could be used for housing and requires those things, yes, we prepare the site, then we have a plan, we have a developer that comes in and wants to invest in building the building for us, and, you know, that's, that's done. So, there's, there's really a lot of things that could be done with it.
Well, that's something we didn't know. I didn't know, I, I didn't know.
Especially the infrastructure piece, that, that helps.
See, that's why, you know, CPA has really been a big help to Groveland, because, you know, we've got a lot of resources that other places don't.
But like you said, you have to have the committee to do the work, the right work and all that.
Yeah, right, right. Any other questions?
I have none.
I don't.
I don't.
I got one more, quick one.
Yep.
And I think I've asked you this before about VZ, and I think the gentleman in the back, backed me up one year about this. Isn't that supposed to be self-sustaining? No? I ask this every year.
Um...
Isn't that happen, wasn't that supposed to be self-sustaining like years ago?
VZ Park...
Just for it to be on its own and be self-sustaining, and whatever happened to it kinda happened to it.
No, VZ Park is self-sustaining.
Yeah.
Except for a few...
Except for the funding that we have to put into it.
No, but this is not, this is not putting any funding into the operating funds of VZ Park. The only thing that the town pays for is part of the insurance in the, the, uh, cutting the grass and snow, snow plowing, which, you know, those aren't small things, but, you know, the town pays for...
Because the insurance went up quite a bit.
Well, and we're working, we're making efforts to pay for that.
Yeah, but it's not supposed to be standalone self-sust, self-sust, I need to research that.
No, someone said that when we purchased it back in nineteen ninety-six, but that's all, it was just said, somebody said it.
Somebody said it, and then all of it kinda became folklore, that that was...
They never, it was never put into a bylaw or put into some requirement.
Well, I, that, I've, I've looked that up, the, the vote at that time.
Yeah.
I remember the vote.
Yeah.
And it was supposed to be no repairs done to the buildings for the same reason that, uh, you're requesting the article, so that it could be brought up to ADA standards.
Yeah.
Uh, but the problem was, nothing was written down.
Right.
The people that remember voting on it, they remembered it was supposed to be self-sustaining, no money from the town of Groveland to run that, and, um, but unfortunately, nothing got written down.
No.
And there's nothing, um, that, I can't find any tape of that particular town meeting where it came up, uh, so what was recorded, uh, it, it was said, but nobody wrote it down and as part of the article.
Okay, I don't, I don't remember it either.
I don't think you were in town at that time, were you?
No, I was here, but I don't, and I was probably at the meeting, but I don't remember, you know, what, what was said, but, you know, that, that said, um, if you really think about it, it doesn't make sense that we wouldn't be able to spend town money on the place. It's a town, town property. I'm very happy that the town really pays minimally on the operating expenses. The place is willing, is able to support itself pretty well, so I, I don't know if, if, um, you know, someday we spend no money on it, but we're, we're really not spending a lot of money on it on a year-to-year basis, you know? This is, this is something to do with VZ Park.
Well, I do remember when it was brought up about, uh, what would happen if the buildings became in disrepair?
Yes.
Uh, and the, the comment was, they'd be torn down.
Right, right, if we don't support them, they will. If, if cuckoos like me that spend, you know, twenty or thirty hours a week taking care of the place don't, I, I don't know who's gonna do it next, but I hope somebody does because if nobody does it, yeah, that's what will happen. The place will, will not be a, an event facility anymore, uh, the buildings will fall into disrepair, and then we're gonna have to pay to tear them down, we're gonna lose the, uh, great place that we've got. Yeah, that, that's what the future is.
Again, not criticizing you, but if you, we had a conversation, I think you sat here early, and you, and you listened to the conversation with the water department.
Yes.
We don't know what the water department does, nor do we know what the light department does.
Yes.
And we really, really don't know what the VZ Park does. I'm talking about the, um, I guess you could say day-to-day operations, some of the decision-making, whatever. It's not brought into us on a regular basis. Again, we probably should have you guys come before us and bring us up to date and, and have those conversations, so we're all up on board, because again, and this is me, it seems like the place is run on a, and I've said it before, and I'm not criticizing you, it seems like it's just run on this little round ball up over there in South Groveland, and I know you're trying to make, I know you guys have got the event for that lady, and I've said it before, if we can get it more transparent, maybe it would be a whole different thing. You know what I mean? And I know you're saying, it's hard, you don't have the people, you don't have the volunteers, whatever, you know?
No, but, um, I don't know, you know, if you recall, I'm not sure when it was, it was probably a little over a year ago, um, I came and gave you a big thing about VZ Park.
Hundred percent, right, hundred percent.
So, I, I'm more than happy to, to come before you and discuss it anytime.
Do you guys ever have like, like meetings up there? Do you guys ever have like board meetings?
There's, you know...
Yeah, you know what, can we, let's kinda reel this back in a little bit, 'cause we're getting really off on a tangent on VZ Park, which really...
No, no, I don't, I don't mean, I just...
Yeah, I know, but that's probably a conversation... Yeah, I know, but that's probably a conversation better left for another day where we can further go into it.
Yeah.
But right now, have any questions about the warrant articles that he has? No? Okay.
Mike, can you just give me your revolving fund report?
Yes, I, I'm working on it. I'll have it for you in a, probably within a week.
Thank you.
So if we're all, nobody else have any questions, I think we're all set. Mr. Dempsey, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you for the time.
I am gonna come talk to you about that community housing bucket, though.
Moving right along, we have, uh, selectmen's time and reports. Selectman Wood, would you like to start?
Sure. I'll make it real quick. Um, just two things. Bill and I met with Senator Tar last week about the Washington Street project. He seems to have a possible way forward on his side. Bill and I have some legal work to do on our side, so I think we can, we can start to move forward with the senator's help, so that'll be good. And an update on the line painting for whoever was asking on Main Street. I was told it'll be done by the end of May. So the white lines will be updated.
This year?
This May.
Selectman Dunn?
It's, uh, five past ten, I'm gonna pass.
Selectman Watson?
I don't, I don't have anything.
Okay, I'm going to pass too, 'cause I can tell.
Classic.
Older unfinished business, Selectman Watson?
Uh, nothing.
Selectman Dunn?
Pass.
Uh, Selectman Wood?
Just five things?
No, I'm good.
Just one thing. I've got a lot of people down there now going to use that facility called The Pines. Estimate on when the bathrooms may be open?
To be honest, I have no idea. I haven't talked to Rennie. I don't know.
Is he, is he running that project now?
I, I honestly don't even know. I haven't been here, so I have no idea.
All right. Uh, that's it. Uh, idler m's not reasonably anticipated at times. Selectman Wood, you have any?
Not a-
Selectman Dunn?
Yes.
Selectman Watson?
No.
Finance director's time. Did you go through all the things you had?
No, so we didn't discuss, we didn't finalize the Seacoast flag football. And if you wanna push that off until we have a fee structure in place, or you wanna allow out-of-town teams to start using our fields.
Quick question. How many Groveland children does that program involve?
I don't know.
Now, before I, I say yes, I, I need to know that, 'cause if it involves zero, I say no. I'm not just gonna speak for myself.
Yeah, I think once we get that information, we can make a decision. But I would say, you know, Groveland people first, and then...
Absolutely. Taxpayers first.
And then I just wanted to take a minute to thank Caitlin and Ellen for doing such a great job during my absence. And thank everyone else. I wanna thank the board for your support over the last few weeks, your well wishes. I've heard from employees and board members and residents. I got cards and letters and emails and phone calls, and it really was very humbling, and it really meant a lot to me while I was recovering. I am here, but I'm not back yet. I'm still working from home. I'll be in the office a couple hours later on this week and start working back into a more regular schedule. But I really appreciate everyone's support over the last few weeks.
And I have to say that I appreciate your conscientiousness, even despite everything you've been through. Whenever I called, text, emailed, you were right there, Johnny on the spot. And that's really a testament to who you are as a professional, as a person, and as an adult. And I really wanna thank you for that professionalism. Couldn't have gone, couldn't have done it without you.
Thank you.
Correspondence, we have minutes from March fourth, 2019, minutes from March eighteenth, 2019, and towns' comments on the mass housing at the Corey apartment project. I'm sure you all read that.
Is that it?
So we will need a meeting next Monday night?
Yes.
Six thirty. Does that work for everyone?
Meeting next Monday night.
Just for the budget and the warrant.
Right. I think that should give us plenty of time to go over and have any questions ready on Monday, too long.
Motion to adjourn at ten oh seven.
Second.
Motion to adjourn at second. All those in favor?
Yep.
Terrific.
Six thirty is that again?
Six thirty.